I liked when you sent your email. They did things last year. I liked your email. I think that is a good way to describe this meeting.
Looks like we're recorded and ready to go.
Kathy?
We all set? Thank you so much. All right, we'd like to welcome you this evening to our council here on Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you for all that are in attendance here and council members that are here. We have a full deck, which is awesome. Welcome back Van from knee surgery. And like to thank those that are watching online as well. Look forward to a lot of the topics that are going to be addressed this evening. We will first begin with an invocation, which I have been assigned myself. And then we'll have a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. John Ellis has kindly accepted my invitation to lead us in the pledge. And he will just come forward here center and lead us in the pledge. Thank you so much.
Our dear gracious Father in heaven, as we gather this early evening, we are most grateful to thee for the recent rain that we've had, for the recent rain that we've had during this this time of drought. We're grateful for the much abundance that we have experienced here in our community and in our nation and recognize the many challenges that are facing each of us, both personally, both here in our community and also abroad. And we pray that we will each of us turn to thee for guidance, for thy guiding hand to conduct ourselves in a manner that will be pleasing to thee, that will be a manner of brotherhood and sisterhood as we seek to make decisions and build our community, build our families, and build our lives together. We're so grateful for the many good people who serve each and every day and throughout the many fine ways, whether it's residents or those that work here and help help our community. We again thank thee for the ability for all of us to be here. And we pray that we will look to thee for continued gratitude in our hearts with with all that we are presented with. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Ellis. All right, so presentations and announcements.
Call to order.
Okay. Thank you again. I for some reason I always skip that, don't I? All right, we'll first do our call to order and our roll call here for our council. Start here with you, Randy on this end.
Randy Powell, present.
Darryl Magleby, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Mike Fensherry, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
And Broderick, present.
Okay, wonderful. And then with presentations, announcements, let's see. We don't have anything in particular at this time, so we will move forward. At this point in the agenda, item number three, this is the open session for public comment. This is something that we have as an opportunity for anyone in the community if they would like to address the council and staff for any items that are not listed on the agenda. We would welcome you to step forward to the table here, state your name. If anyone has an item they would like to bring forward.
So if it's on the agenda, then we wait until that.
Yes, please do. Yes. All right, step forward, state your name.
Lincoln Jacobs. Can I borrow the mouse, sir?
Yeah.
Lincoln Jacobs. I have an evil twin that sometimes goes by Inigo Montoya, but that's wholly separate, separate thing. Just ignore him.
Are you right-handed or left-handed?
Thank you. Why is this a is this a different mouse? Oh, Inigo Montoya, got it, sorry. Lincoln Jacobs. I'm here with some of my pickleball friends. We play at Hollow Park a lot. This is just a small segment of our group. We're really about thirty-five to forty people. And we show up here just whatever day works for us. And it's become it's become a family. There was one day last week, couple, I'm sorry, a few weeks ago where we made a few calls in the afternoon and some families came over. And this is the Holdways. Do we have anyone from the Holdways here? Kitty and Chad? So up here on the left is their six-year-old named Ruby. And here is their four-year-old named Holden. And I brought my pickleball launcher and we set it at a really gentle lob so it'd go over the fence while the rest of us were playing. So it'd go over the net while the rest of us were playing pickleball. And when they got home that night, Ruby made a Christmas list for her mom and dad and said, I want a pickleball launcher for Christmas. And her little brother, four years old, said, and I want balls so that we can have balls for the pickleball launcher. So our group is actually ranges anywhere from four years old up to about eighty. I don't dare ask how old they really are. So it's it's quite a wonderful group of pickleball players. But this is our current layout in Linden City for pickleball courts. So we have four at Hollow Park and then a couple at Creekside and a couple at Pheasant Brook. And then we have four down in Anderson Farms. And we've been to some of these and we have some pretty good, there's pretty good traffic that goes through here through most of these. The one at Hollow Park is the one that gets a ton of traffic. And it's pretty common that we'll have, this is a picture. So we'll have the sixteen people that are playing with ten or twelve off to the side. And and I included this picture just to illustrate that we could really use more up in this area if it's at all possible. And I really should go back here just a minute to the pickleball club. So Dana, who is like the mom of pickleball, Dana, you need to raise your hand. You brought her paddle.
She's gonna smack people.
This this morning, we were exchanging some texts and somebody was saying, well, this is how people work with their city to promote pickleball. And she said, okay, item number one, form a club. And she said, the Linden Pickleball Club, done. So I don't know what it means. I don't know how much I owe her for dues or who the president is, but apparently we're the pickleball club. And we're here to say, what can we do to help the city work? We're not here to complain. We're here to just say, what can we do as the pickleball club to help the city promote pickleball within the community? This is what the trends are for pickleball. So I think Hollow Park had pickleball as early as two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. This is kind of significant for me. In two thousand twelve, my wife was diagnosed with lung cancer. And in two thousand thirteen, she started playing pickleball. And I was mountain biking. That was the way I was dealing with that emotion. And I remember riding down from the hills and coming to Hollow Park and playing pickleball in two thousand thirteen. So I know that Linden has had them for a very, very long time and has been very, very supportive to pickleball. And we appreciate that very, very much. And we would just love to work with you to help it move forward. I know there's been some controversy with the noise at Hollow Park. I know that the city has done their very best to put up noise barriers. And if there's anything that we can do to help, we would love to help. Let me go back to this one. So here in two thousand and twenty-one, pickleball took off exponentially. I mean, it's been growing throughout the country and the world for a long time. But in two thousand and twenty-one, you can see this took off some pretty exponential growth. And that's that's everywhere. And so the city's done really well at growing. The question is, when we look fifty years down the road, Cadillac Center Street, when we look down fifty years, ten years down the road, where is that we need to be to be able to provide what the city, what the city residents are doing, where they're going with this? This was a picture from Saturday, the first ever nationally televised pickleball tournament.
Did you watch that?
It was pretty cool. First ever was on Channel Two. And what's really cool is we have here.
These are the waters.
So Waters and Waters, this is a forty-five-year-old mom with a fifteen-year-old daughter. And it broke my heart because they actually won. And it broke my heart because their opponents over here were Smith, and I don't even know how to say her name, Kovaleva. And Callie Jo Smith is one of our local heroes. Callie Jo Smith was a University of Utah tennis player. And she hated pickleball because it had a ridiculous noise and it annoyed her. But somebody talked her into playing once. And then she and her athletic husband went to the courts to play. And some older couple said, hey, you want to play? And they thought, yeah, we're going to school you. And she ended up losing eleven to two. And her competitive nature, she got deep in it. And she's now a world. I think she and her partner, well, this says they were ranked number one in the world, but they lost yesterday or Saturday. So maybe they're really two.
Still number one.
Still number one?
Her heart's.
No, still number one. Even though we lost, because they because they beat him the last few times.
But she's a local and she actually comes to Hollow Park and coaches a little bit, which is really, really awesome for us. In our Utah Valley Magazine here, I'm just going to quote a paragraph that she says. It gets a little emotional for me, touches home a little bit. Pickleball is a life changer. She says, it's a game where you can play with your kids and your grandkids. I've heard so many stories from cancer patients and people with depression who say pickleball gave them a reason to live. It's a way of being active in a sport that is playable by all ages. It hits really close to home. When my sweetheart passed away, I may or may not have gone to some counseling. But about ten months ago, you guys saw me walk in the back door. That came to the point when I thought, midlife dating's not always working out great. I need to find out who I am, who me, without any other person in my life, what it is that I can do. And so I walked through the doors here and have attended every single city council meeting since. No agenda, but just what is it that I can do and what is it that I can learn? The other thing I did is I walked onto the pickleball court where I met my other family. You guys might have thought that I'm just a stray dog that kind of walked through there and and just smiled at you. But this became my Linden City family and not just you guys, but our city staff as well, who put in more hours than I do at my own job, which don't tell my boss I said that. But the amount of work that they do, the amount of work that you do, the compassion that I've seen with you as you deal with people with very polar views has been very, very impressive to me, very helpful. You have taught me how to get along with people and how to work to solve problems. And that's our number one goal as the pickleball club, is to work with you to help figure out how we can move forward with pickleball in the city. There at Hollow Park today, we showed up and there were twenty-seven people that wanted to play. And throughout that entire time, there's a tennis court just on the other side. And tennis is important. I love tennis. That was where my sweetheart and I fell in love and and dated. But that tennis court sat empty almost the entire time that we were all there. So we had everybody sitting there waiting while the tennis court was just open and not being used. There are ways that you can put lines on the tennis courts. This is up in Seattle where I was last week, Redmond. And they have this tennis court converted into four pickleball courts. So you can get another sixteen players going. This is what the layout looks like. It's something that might be an option for us. We would love to to see if there is a way that we can help make that happen. In the Linden General Plan Committee, we've talked about Linden, right? A little bit of country, that's who we've been in the past. And trying to define, is that who we are in the future? The the parcels of land have been bought up and we're putting housing in there like crazy. Are we still a little bit of country? Who are we? Linden is a little bit about families, a lot about families. In my life, my kids have grown, they're gone. I wake up in the morning in an empty house. I go to bed at night in an empty house. But I know that my family is at the pickleball court. And that's one of the things that Callie Jo pointed out is it's a great sport where social people get together and socialize. The two courts that we have, those are great, but the areas where we have four courts, I can't get that to go down. The areas that we have four courts, maybe those are even better. And eight courts would be phenomenal because it creates a very, very close-knit social family that plays together both physically, mentally, emotionally. It's a great support for everybody. So it would be fun to see Linden continue to be who they always have been, a lot about families, regardless of your family, whether it's a traditional family with you and your children, or whether it's a pickleball family, or whether there are kind of families that we create in our in our community. I'll shut up because you guys probably have questions and other people might want to say things, but thanks for letting me share some thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Lincoln.
As as a reminder, this is just the open session. We received this information just today from Lincoln, and so it's not advertised on the agenda as an action item. And so the council can't vote on this, but you're welcome to take public comment if you choose to do so on it, so.
All right, any comments or questions from council?
Yes. I am Van Broderick is, if I were to say, any people that have grandkids or kids that just hit one key on a piano, Van is that for roads. The reason we have great roads is we have great leadership by Van Broderick. I'm going to claim the key for pickleball because I saw it once, I was bedridden. I'm going to get like Lincoln here. I was bedridden. I have MS. I've never played pickleball. I love pickleball. I saw how it brings a community together. So thank you, all those who have brought this together as a community. This is what I have envisioned for many years. And so I just from my, I mean, why would I watch something that I cannot play? I can't move that many steps left or right. So I just want to say thank you for being part of a community and building that within our little bit of country. To me, a little bit of country is not just animals. It's about friendships and relationships with each other and building a community. That's what a little bit of country means. And I think you guys are the epitome of that. On that note, I'd like to say, how do we fundraise? So I, you know, this is a topic that maybe, how could they help us fundraise for potential land in the future? That's just a thought. Because we can't allocate all that money that we need for an eight parcel or an eight court parcel. So I would say, how can we help have them help us by maybe doing some fundraising for that?
I have a question for y'all. So as you know, we have this seven hundred North, you know, corridor, village zone. And one of the couple of things that are coming out there are some indoor sports facilities. Talking with developers there, sometimes there's been discussions of someone coming and potentially building like a big tennis pickleball indoor year-round facility. Would you all be willing to pay a membership to belong to a club that had the state-of-the-art, you know, facilities like that? Or do you feel like you want the the public space to provide that? I'm just curious. If it's, yeah, year-round.
Winter time is a great time to be on the indoor. You play the different kind of ball and things, but it's it's nice to be in the winter time. We play at Hollow at thirty-six and above. So we've got it down to where if it's thirty-six degrees or above, we play until it gets to that point when we can't. But it's really, it's really a very meaningful thing. It's brought a lot of people together. We have a brother that's got had MS in our state presidency, and he is playing with us now. And he said, that's, it keeps him moving, he keeps him going, he loves it. There's a lot of things that it does. Gives confidence. And I I talked to a friend who works in the police department in Orem, and he said, they have less problem now with juvenile problems in the city because they put these courts up and they seem to have a lot of kids wanting to play against each other. It's better to play than to have them fighting and doing other things. And he said, it's really changed the dynamics of what they do. And that's why Orem's trying to do that. I thought this would be a great thing here to have for the young people. And I'm seventy-one, but you know, you play and it's a very, it's very fun. And the people we play with are really family. They really are. This group that we have is, it's a wonderful experience. You go home feeling good, like you've got something done, and that's your exercise. There's a few people here that play a little longer than the rest of us.
Yeah, I'm a pretty novice player, too. I I played a little bit at the PG Rec where I I I go frequently. And this wonderful senior citizen with osteoporosis, you know, bent over back, kind of scuttling around the court, I thought, oh, I have to play soft with. She beat my pants off. She had a wicked forearm. Anyway.
Can I address the membership club?
Yeah.
I think that a public space is better. We prefer outside. Like, I think our group mostly prefers outside. And I think with with the group that we play with, we have many that are senior citizens that are retired, that live on a more limited fixed income. There's a lot of us that it wouldn't be a big, it it, the cost of being prohibitive is is true for part of the group, but not all of the group. And so we don't want any of our family to be left behind.
But there is another side to that, and there's different ways to do that. Because the club pickleball in Orem, which is would be a competing scenario, they have multiple different ways that you can go. For instance, you can do a full year-round membership. I play there in a lot of times, just in the evenings. They have open, they have different, you know, groups that can play at different times. And I'll go there and play, you know, from a, it's like a nine to midnight that they have. You know, anybody can go and play. And you play ten, ten bucks and you get, you don't have to have a membership, but you can go whenever you want. And you do that. And so I've done that. So there's options for you to do that. I've also played a tournament there. So last week ago, two weeks ago, I played a tournament. Well, that was a free piece. It ended up being about seventy-five dollars, you know, to to do that. So they made money on on going to, you know, for a tournament. So there's multiple ways that you can, you know, people will pay to go that, especially for bad weather, you know, during the summer, during the summer when it's hot, during the day, and also late in the evenings when you might have more time available as well as in the winter. So.
Right, because our courts aren't supposed to stay open until midnight.
I think you would find that you would have a lot of, a lot of options, especially with the numbers. But going back to the idea of eight courts or whatever, like PG, the ones that have eight, those those are some of the most sought-after ones because the culture is such where people like to go as big groups and change partners and move around and try different different groups. And that's where you get to know everybody. That's where the community comes in. That's why the four, the eight, the larger ones, you see, people are going in.
All right.
And finding finding something on the east side would be.
Okay. I saw Hannah. If you could state your name really quick for the for the minutes.
Oh, sorry, Richard Haddock.
Richard Haddock.
Amy Skidmore.
Okay.
Another area of concern would be as far as looking into the future, the numbers of people who are going to be looking at playing pickleball have an interest in pickleball. Just in our area, we put out an interest survey, and over forty percent of people in our area who who have never played pickleball have shown an interest that they want to learn. So the interest level, the population is going to be exploding on the pickleball courts in the next few years, especially with the younger people. We've had a lot of younger people now. We've seen, it started out as grandma, grandpa's sport, and now it's turning into a young adult's sport. And we're seeing more and more young adults who are wanting to do this as well. So as far as looking into the future, I think Linden could really use more courts. We're not going to have less pickleball players.
All right, thank you, council.
Yeah, we're getting close. Maybe the rumors I've been hearing about pickleball are true. My wife actually encouraged me to buy some paddles for. So so far, we're we're on our way. They're still in the garage in the package, but nonetheless. And most of these senior citizens here are either my ward or stake, so I know we better do something for them. But here here's a question I have, and I don't doubt for a minute the the passion, and I appreciate that. I also know that people who play tennis have a great passion for what they do. And certainly, it's not our intent here to go to get into the weeds. But you know, when you talk about turning tennis courts into four pickleball courts, I I wonder what that's going to do for the tennis players. There'll be increased competition for tennis players. I it's just something that came to mind. And, you know, we we also need to serve that part of the community also, so maybe some thoughts on that.
It doesn't ruin the tennis courts.
No, I'm not saying it ruins the tennis courts. I'm saying the availability of courts.
They can still use the tennis courts. And, you know, if you wanted to prioritize tennis there, we're happy to do that because we sit, I mean, like this morning, we're, all of our pickleball courts are full and the tennis courts are empty. And, you know, I I think that we could definitely work it out. And pickleball is the most like accommodating sport there is. You walk up, you stick your paddle in the thing, and everybody's willing to rotate you in. This group is super inclusive of everyone that wants to come, beginners, it doesn't matter, anybody that wants to come. And I feel like we can get along with the tennis players, too.
Okay, now, I've got a pickleball paddle, but when you say stick your pickleball paddle in the thing.
There's a rack.
Help me out. What is what is the thing?
The rules are posted. If you stick your pickleball paddle in the rack, you get to play next.
Yeah. Well, on the on the arcade.
The term is paddles up.
See, I'm already further along than I was before I came.
Like if you go down to.
Making progress.
Go down to the PG courts, there are thirty slots. And there are nights where all thirty slots are waiting with paddles in them to play for eight courts. And so what it means is that you go and there's a way that you kind of go in order, and you just rotate the next court open after you play a game. And you go around. So that's the way to do it.
All right, well, in interest of time, interest of time. Thank you.
I'm interested, so.
Yes. This is, these are great points. I just need to represent maybe some of the other voices on the other side of the coin. And this is, as I'm sure you're well aware, in all communities, the the challenge is for those that live nearby, the noise sometimes becomes an issue. We do have neighbors in this area, especially Hollow Park, who have expressed concern with that. The city recently invested significantly in the Cousteau Block material. Apparently, it's done some, but maybe not enough. And so that's something, also, I know some communities are requiring players to purchase the quieter paddles or the quieter balls to try to help with that. And that's a hard thing to police or to really enforce. Some HOAs do enforce it in some communities. Anyway, so that's something maybe we could, as pickleball enthusiasts, look into to to be good neighbors when we're playing the sport. But it's certainly something I think we will look at.
Mayor, if I could, I think for the sake of time and moving the meeting along, we appreciate it. And I think you'd find a lot of support up here. Lincoln invited me like a month or so ago, and I haven't taken him up on it, but I I will. I'll come play with you guys. I love pickleball. I think we have a Parks master plan that has a lot of future pickleballs on it, and we will continue to keep that in mind as we plan for the future of our city. As far as the ask right now of transitioning that tennis court into pickleball, I'm open to that. And I would love to see through the correct process, a formal process, an agenda item where we can hear from our Parks and Rec Department, where we can talk about the possibility of that. I think we've heard enough. I think there's enough support of the council to at least go through that formal process of of looking at that, getting the getting the good information to make good decisions. And so that's, that's what I'd like to propose or suggest is is let's let's instruct staff to do a formal.
Maybe a presentation of.
Presentation.
Of what's the inventory long range the city's looking at doing? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm saying specifically on the Hollow Park tennis court to to.
Because what I'm hearing is additional facilities, maybe on the east side as well, would be appreciated.
There are two things. One is the short term, one is the longer term. The short term is an easy fix with nets and painting, right? Which is fairly short-term, very little cost. And then the other part is the, yeah, east side, more courts.
Or nets that roll on enough really, so tennis players can still.
And would you envision if a tennis players came, you could potentially have two players wanting that entire space, would they have priority for all four courts to cede to them and give up so they could make their game?
You could do it the same as pickleball, which is rotation around, right? Say, okay, they they come on, they're the next person. So when, you know, the the games are done with the pickleball, the tennis player gets to go on and do it. So there's different ways you could do it. You could either give them full priority, or you could give them the same priority that we do with rotating the teams around.
Very good. Well, thank you for your passion and sharing your story and how your.
I'm going to make one last comment.
Yes, oh, go ahead, Van.
When I started on the city council, we had this many courts. So we put in twelve, and we're anxious to do more. We're anxious to be good neighbors and be conscientious of the noise. of the noise and how it impacts those that are close there. So, we feel your passion. I like playing. I like being a part of the group. And.
And we thank you for putting them in.
So, so we're working towards, more towards that end. And Councilmember Powell, I remember the first day she said pickleball, and I was, what the heck is that? But now we have twelve courts.
Thank you.
Great.
Just, just as an FYI, we also have our community center. There is one court in the gym that's available for rent for pickleball. So, anybody can come when that's free and, and rent that space.
Do we allow them to rent the net as well in that scenario?
I believe that's acceptable. Yeah. So.
And it's very reasonable.
So technically, we have thirteen courts in Linden. And, you know, while I'm, while I've got the mic here, also, there are sixteen in this map. There are eight here in Pleasant Grove, just up Locust, and then eight others just on the other side of the, the high school. In Orem, there are five, in Bonneville Park, and there's two over here. So, so there's quite a few inner adjacent areas as well.
Growing.
We'll bring some more information back and, we'll bring some information back and schedule this.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, you all. Okay. So, moving forward, is there anyone here who has a open session item that is not related to pickleball? All right. Seen done. We'll go on to item number four. This is our council reports. And Van, are you ready to start this off?
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you. And I suspect most of fellow council members will say the same thing. But I love Linden days. I love what it does for our community. I, I love how our residents respond to it, the comments that they make, being able to participate, the patriotism, the love of community, the love of neighbors. I won't go into individual events, but I think it's a well-done part of the Linden that just helps our community stay close together. So, I love it. Know it's a lot of hard work, so I thank our staff. And, and I'll leave it just there to be brief.
I'll go next. Chief said he could write a book with all that has happened since the last time we met. I think Chief has briefed all of us on the events of August first, early morning of August first. I won't go into that. They've had several drug arrests, a couple of things up at Dry Canyon. Very busy. Chief and his guys are very busy and doing an incredible job. Officer Taryn Harmon, our hometown golden girl, has finished up her training and will be running solo over the next couple of weeks. We're excited for her. Parks and Rec, Linden Days, just incredible. Heath, great job, you and your staff. Daryl, great job as well, representing us there. So much fun to, to be a part of that. My family took home the trophy for the younger age group at the Cardboard Regatta. It was interesting because my oldest son took home a trophy, and my youngest son had the slowest time possibly ever for the Cardboard Regatta.
That was the funnest one to watch.
It was absolutely fun.
For those who don't know, okay, it's one boy doing this, and the other one sticking it in there. So, they're like spinning. It was the best. You should have had an award just for the longevity.
They were supposed to be seven and older, but they were five and six. So, Heath was kind to let them be a part of it. But it took a good, long time for them to go across. I almost jumped in and pushed them the rest of the way. So, thank you, Heath, to you and your staff. Please make sure they understand how much we love and support as a council, all that happens there, all the organization. And we really appreciate it.
Was very impressive. I thoroughly enjoyed the events I was able to attend and my family. So, again, thank you for, for the monumental effort, because it was monumental, that's for sure. A couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce Lunch and Learn, I think is what it's called. And it was fantastic. We had four groups there that gave presentations, and it all had to do with, with mental, emotional, and physical health. One was on sexual abuse for children, detecting it and being aware of it and how to, how to prevent it. And that was very informative. One was on suicide prevention. There were others on abuse, spousal abuse, and things like that. So, I think it's very worthwhile that we participate in the, in the chamber events. And it was a quality, quality event. So, I, I'd like to endorse that. That's really good. So, don't want to give too much information. It's not a, not a big deal. But our, in our last Development Review Committee meeting, we had, we met with representatives of Walmart, and they are looking at a drone delivery base here at, at the Linden Walmart. Now, granted, there's a lot of, a lot of things that have to happen before that will happen. But doing the research on it, it is absolutely fascinating how they do that. We asked some pretty hard questions, like how do you keep from chopping up a cat or a small child, or, or things like that? As it turns out, they, they drop the package from eighty feet, and they have a little parachute on it. And then I've got some videos. It just drops right in your yard and goes back to base and.
It's not a flat of water.
Really? That's wild.
Oh, it's, it's, it's amazing.
At the tip of the driver.
Highly, highly regulated. And they're working with the FAA to, to come up with some more, once they've done some more testing on it and so forth. But Mike and Mary and Noah and Trent were really good to, we all went through the code and the, the ordinance and gave them some very helpful suggestions, I think. But I think it's an idea whose time has come. And I'm sure that we'll be hearing more about that as, as they come back and make additional presentations. So, that was very fascinating. So, thank you. I'm trying to think of what else. Again, I always say North Point Solid Way Special Services District is doing well. We've got some, our feasibility study as far as expanding and/or renovating, remodeling, and perhaps even rebuilding will be due shortly. I've said this before, but we're just about to the point where Neil Schwindman, our director of the, of the transfer station, wants to come and make a presentation to the council. We'll schedule that appropriately. But he's got some thoughts and some ideas and to explain some things that are going on and hopefully will be going on in the future. So, just be prepared for that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. All right. Yes, we've had a very busy couple of weeks. Linden Days was phenomenal. Just today, Daryl was so generous and, and treated the Parks and Rec staff as a thank you at Pizza Factory. And it was, it was amazing to sit with them. And they don't get to rest much this season after Linden Days, unfortunately. It just keeps it going. But they did amazing. I heard from the community, you know, all the events were fantastic. So well-done, and so appreciated and enjoyed. And they, they go above and beyond. Thank you, Heath. You, you really run an amazing department there. Just also with Linden Days, I just wanted to thank former Mayor Aserson. He lent us his big grills for our new breakfast that we did with the first responders over here in our public safety building. Had a wonderful attendance. Daryl can share more. And Mayor Aserson stayed the entire time to make sure they got those pancakes to the right perfectly. A lot of them turned out a little overcooked at first, but he schooled them a little bit on how to do that right. And he stayed and worked the whole time. So, as we were running around to all the different events. And then I also wanted to, and, and our new youth council, I'm sure Randy's gonna talk about all the things that they participated in, our Little Miss Linden, our youth police academy youth, they were all wonderful and contributed in many different ways and participated. We're excited to have them all on board. I wanted also thank Rebecca here. Kudos to her with the payroll glitch that happened. She was on it really quick, got it resolved by the end of that day. And I know that helped a lot of the employees. With the Utah Lake Authority that now has become the new conversion from the Utah Lake Commission to the Utah Lake Authority with the new legislation, I'm serving on that board. I just wanted to report to you all, our last city contribution of thirty-four hundred dollars for our portion of dues for the year, will be making our last contribution now that the state legislature has apportioned from the general state fund to take care of some of the mitigation, the cleanup. And recently, they just used our Linden Marina, during our Linden Days actually, to launch drones to go ahead and take care of some targetings, the fragmites and some of the invasive species. So, there's a lot of good things happening there to try to help clean up the lake and those various things and improve the recreation there. The Utah Lake Authority has nothing to do with an island proposal. It's kind of, it's a, a different thing altogether. But I'm sure we're gonna be hearing more about that as, that comes forward down the road. And then I just wanted to also mention, so the Okawa family is helping with an Eagle project this Friday and Saturday with our several parks. We have sixty-five new trees getting planted.
Planted?
They are planted. Okay. So, they are going to be helping do the mulch rings. And so, if we could get any volunteers in the community to help with that. They need a lot of help. And we so appreciate the new initiative to get more trees planted and replaced and beautify our parks. So, that's gonna be, hopefully, we can get that flyer. I don't know if we can put it on maybe the, I have it on the Linden Community Connection. Maybe we could put it up on the Linden City page.
Send me something we can do.
I'll send that to you. Cause they're running short on volunteers, they said right now. Unfortunately, I have to be out of town for a wedding, so I can't be there. And then also, the ACE Intermountain Transfer Station, which is just on our boundary here with Pleasant Grove. They did come forward to their planning commission requesting to increase the tonnage. They're going in and out, and that backs up to our strategic commercial area that we are hoping to have some really lovely things come in there. And so, that was a concern. Unfortunately, the, their planning commission, Mike Florence, with our planning department and myself, both wrote letters. And we tried to express some of our concerns and maybe some things they could do to mitigate, to help us out. And unfortunately, they increased the tonnage allowed per day with trucks and did not, were not willing to require a masonry wall. So, we went ahead and visited their facility. They invited us there. And, and they do run a very well-run facility. But those are some concerns that we have just with the sheer tonnage and the very large trucks going there. And so, I, I can share with each of you individually if you have different questions about, you know, the relationship with our, you know, what Mike, where Mike serves on the board and kind of where that, those services, how they're operating. But I won't spend more time on it now. And our general plan committee is doing a great job, headed up by Mike. They had our, our consulting firm was there at the breakfast, had a lot of great feedback. So, hopefully, Mike can share with us and a little bit about that. They will be having their next meeting. What, is there another meeting with jointly with council?
In December.
Not till December?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be meeting as a committee. I need to work on that getting scheduled.
All right. Great. And then maybe at the end of tonight, Adam, did we get a new date scheduled to do ARC, to host the other councils?
Yeah, it's September twenty-sixth.
On Monday. Okay. Thank you. All right. You know, sometimes when you come back from being out of town, your brain's a little, back on track. We're gonna host it. So.
You need to send her at six o'clock PM on the twenty-sixth of September.
Another date I'd love for all of the community and the council to be aware of especially is, and Randy, I'll have her share a little bit about the September thirteenth Life Hacks event. That will be just the day after our city drill. So, that's all I have. I'll turn the time over to you.
Just one quick thing I forgot, if you'll forgive me, Daryl. From the Forest Department, I, I did sign up for the CERT training and was accepted, which in and of itself was no great accomplishment.
Good job.
But anyway, I'm gonna get the CERT training.
You're saying that because there was a waiting list and you still made the cut. So, I mean.
Well, I just said, you know who my friend is, don't you? And I said, no, who? I said, Randy Powell. And they said, you're in.
Pulling favors. All right.
Awesome.
Okay, Daryl.
Wonderful reports. I attended the tree board meeting last week on Wednesday, and they did announce that they planted sixty-three trees, is what I was told. And the Eagle Project is this Friday, Saturday. And they're gonna get the bark there and prepared for that. One of the members of the board is going to be working on a grant. It's called the Community Forestry Partnership Grant, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to get some additional trees to be planted in our city. And their intent of that, to giving these grants out, is that we plant a variety of trees that are not common to our area, and to see how they do in the area, and to kind of just get a feel for how they do in, in this climate. And so, some of the recommended parks that some of these trees will go in is Friar, the City Park, Linden City Park, Pioneer Park, and then it's also the Linden View Park. And any recommendations from the council or the community where these trees should go, would love to hear from everyone on that. And then they're excited to be participating on the 2024 Linden Centennial Celebration with the goal of a thousand trees, is what I understand, is the, the hope that we plant in that given year throughout our community. So, that'd be wonderful. Regarding Linden Days, we spent about three hours this morning going through every detail of every day and making very extensive notes. And I've, I won't share those here tonight. But I'm very appreciative of the Heath and his staff. I, I've grown to love them and appreciate what they do. They're a great machine that works really hard during this week of Linden Days. And they need to be commended for all that they do for us as, as citizens. Some of the things that, that we talked about is the, the pickleball tournament. I think it was the first this year. It was very well-attended in all age brackets and levels. And that will probably increase and grow as that, that demand for pickleball increases in our community. The first-ever Sunday concert that we had in the park, we had over four hundred and fifty people attend that. And it was very well-received. And it was very entertaining and very enjoyable. The car show is going to be moving next year to Pheasant Brook Park because of parking challenges that we have here. And we're going to try it there to see if we can have a better experience for the citizens. That is to be determined, how we do that and, and how we accomplish that. But that is the anticipated goal, is to move it down there next year.
We'll miss the shade.
Yes.
Well, maybe these new trees that we get from the grant, we can plant there, have them grow really quick. The Spike Ball, the Cowgirl Clinic, the Senior Social, all those items, all those events were highly successful. There was a hundred and three participants in Bingo. On the Senior Social, the Ice Cream Social, of course, we ran out of product. I think we, we guessed what we needed there. Mentioned to the staff this morning that we would probably want to go hard-serve next year and see if we can go back to that and use the Linden Youth Committee to help us with that possibly.
Younger risks.
I just remember when I was on the council, five years ago, I couldn't use this forearm for about a day and a half after I scooped ice cream that night.
You gotta train in advance.
Yeah, you do. Some suggestions there is maybe we have a, a police presence where they, they are there. There's a need to have some things on that evening before the movie to entertain. And, and so, there's some suggestions of what we need to do there. And a police presence in the means that we don't trust the citizens, but to have them possibly be there for informative reasons and to do kind of what they did at the car show, something of that nature. But we'll talk about that more as it comes closer. The fishing went well in Friar Park. Tie-dyeing was extremely busy. They went through every single shirt that they, and then a lot of people brought them. Ping-pong, all that was really well-received. The Junior Rodeo, the, and the idea was to have more mutton busting, possibly a chicken chase in the future, and have those events maybe from five to seven, and then have the other events take place that evening. Quickly, the parade did well. The only challenge we had on Two Hundred South is people wanted to drop off their, the parade participants down through that corridor where the high school, other junior high was. And we might need to find a way to manage that a little better next year, just for safety reasons. T-shirt Rocket was huge. Heath was probably the most loved person in the parade because of that rocket that he sent the t-shirts through. And maybe we do a couple of those next year. The horse trail ride on Saturday was successful. We had over two hundred and forty people at the breakfast. The youth seemed to enjoy that, to see those fire engines and police cars. Cardboard Regatta, one concept we came up with is maybe have a sponsorship, like a Home Depot, to maybe provide cardboard and.
Duck tape.
Duck tape. And that we save the citizens thousands of dollars in duct tape. Possibly do something like that next year. I know Jake, you mentioned you spent forty dollars or more.
Air 401K.
First-place boat and the last-place boat.
Everything. Everything was highly successful. There was a bit of concern about the quality of the concert on Saturday evening. Some people didn't care for it as much, but they were entertained, and then the fireworks was, again, as good as the one that's done on the Fourth of July Stadium of Fire. So kudos to the city and Heath and his staff for all that they did during that week. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Daryl. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just following along with, really quickly, a few points on Linden Days. Again, kudos, as all my other colleagues have said. I have had somebody come up and said that they would like to add a senior division to the mayor's candy scramble. So can we make a note of that? They were adamant that they wanted their own section at this, at your candy scramble, please, Mayor. Not just a seventeen-and-over or whatever.
That adult section is.
It's intimidating.
It's pretty wicked.
So those two girls.
Yes, just a senior, I don't know, sixteen-and-over.
Have they used Jazzy Scooters?
I don't know if that would work in dirt.
I'll bring mine, so, whatever it takes to get out there with you all. As to the regatta, yes, our Linden Youth Council, we did take first in the open division.
Fastest boat.
Yeah, the fastest boat in the open division, which was lovely. And I had to publicly say thank you to Brett Swalberg, who was one of the parents of, in our youth council, who helped guide that little group of kids who did that. How many rolls did you use?
Probably like twelve.
Sixteen, yeah, so, yeah, it takes a lot. And at Home Depot, they are seven dollars for sixty yards, so, yes, you're talking thousands of dollars that would be saved if we could do that. So, oh, and senior bingo, what a blast that was. So, I mean, we need to do that again, like in January, just to get the seniors out, okay? So whatever I need to do to help with that. Senior, the senior center is doing wonderful, Jamie's always amazing. Next year, we will, I'll probably be trying to make this mandatory if we are scooping, that gets you to do senior drum with us the week before, so you can work out your bicep, because we work hard, and it'll get you prepared for Ice Cream Social. Let's see, candy scramble. Just one question, as a matter of information for the public. Heath, what is your best estimate on just an average one firework when it goes into the sky?
Cost?
Yeah, the cost of one average lovely firework. I've had, I've had citizens ask me.
Four, one four-inch shell, which is the biggest shell that we use. I've probably had three hundred and seventy-five of those, not including the finale, and paid six thousand dollars, so.
There's one firework going up, I know I've looked at it in the past, but.
I wouldn't have to, maybe we just take three hundred by six thousand and see what that is.
Yep, something like that. So I had several people ask me, and I knew I knew a long time ago when I was, worked with you on Linden Days. So Linden City Youth Council, we have on September third, I mean, sorry, thirteenth, at Wadley Farms. They've been very gracious to accommodate us and provide the facility for, no charge, for our youth. Our youth council, along with Kelly Johnson from our police department, are putting on something called Life Hacks 101, which is a great opportunity for youth in our community, seventeen and eighteen, or the last two years of high school, to come together and learn things that are life hacks, that are things that'll help them get ready for life, whether it's balancing budgets, or changing a flat tire, or, help me out, Ladon. What's my brother kept?
Reading and math, first aid, first aid.
We got.
Learn what to do if you get pulled over, yes.
Not to panic.
Registration is.
So all those things that you might panic with, or have a difficulty with cooking economically easy meals.
Doing a resume, what young men are awarded, so the council reached out.
Yes, and doing resumes, those kinds of things.
Scholarships and like that.
Great, great bunch of, a baker's dozen of youth that are participating in this and reaching out to the community, learning lots of good skills. Mayor, is there anything else that you would like to add on Life Hacks 101?
Yes, so we'll have our drill Monday evening, and then the Life Hacks is on Tuesday, the following evening. And we already have, as you know, we work with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, quite hand-in-hand for our drill and the block captains and the reporting. But we want this to be something that is for the entire community, interfaith. So this is at Wadley Farms, they've graciously.
Seven to nine.
Yeah, seven to nine, so all youth, age sixteen to eighteen, Linden youth are invited to attend. So we would like to have a good outreach throughout the community there with the school. So, yeah, and our youth council are in charge of it, they're coming up with the topics, they're organizing it. Like to thank one of our advisors, Ladon, here who is in attendance, she's one of our.
Amazing, adult advisors.
Advisors. So it's been tremendous to see how fired up they are, and this may be something that could be an ongoing tradition. We just, you know, Kelly has conceived of this over the years as something, we really need to get the younger generation involved in emergency preparedness, or just launching into adulthood and having that connection with the community, and so.
We're very excited about the whole thing.
Tremendous event.
It's a great, a lot of effort being put into that, so look on our city website, find out more information if you have any youth that are in that age bracket. Also, I had the opportunity and the honor to be able to attend the VFW, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Tribute Dinner, or the recognition dinner. We have Linden put forward Jake Simmons' name, and just had a great time with he and his wife and other officers that were being honored that night, as well as firefighters and honor guards. Honor guards are those who come to funerals and present flag tributes for those who are from wars. And we had individuals who, five, three hundred, three hundred and five hundred presentations that they've done. So amazing group of people that evening at the historical Utah County Historic Courthouse, and got to hear the keynote speaker of Burgess Owens, so it was a wonderful evening. Also, just matter of, in wrapping up, just, well, I guess, one other thing. Who provided the sausage? I had so many people that wanted to know that, who was the provider of the sausage?
Chief.
Mike.
Mike, I need to, I need to know who, who, what brand of sausage that was, so many people said it was amazing, so. From Linden Days, sorry.
That's a good question, just this little meat shop right here in town.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just, oh, just over, oh, I know, over by the, what is it, storage units, right? Awesome.
Thank you to our chief, that was a free breakfast for the community.
That was wonderful.
That Linden Days first responder breakfast, so it was amazing, thank you. They worked, and Daryl worked so hard, too, thank you. Randy, anything else?
And then just last thing, just wanted to recognize our new sign ordinance for the gas stations. I love how the new seven-eleven looks clean and open, so it just, it's a nice change on that corner of Center Street and State Street, and I appreciate it finally coming to fruition, so.
Thank you so very much. Counsel, I would recommend, you know, Daryl gave a fantastic report with the meeting he had with the Parks and Rec today regarding Linden Days. If you have any additional comments about feedback on that, maybe we could do that at the end tonight, just for the sake of time to move forward on the agenda. And then I just had two other quick things. I did, so Juan Garrido, our Public Works Director, I was able to attend with him at the Utah Board of Water Resources meeting. Linden was awarded a very significant grant, and this is gonna be helping move us in the direction to meet the upcoming state deadlines and help with our water conservation efforts. So I just wanted to give those kudos to Juan and his staff, as well as our engineering team, who obtained a very significant grant there that's gonna save the taxpayers of Linden a tremendous amount of funds. And then also, I just, with the recent unfortunate events that many people are probably aware of that have been in the media, wanted to, I just have to thank our chief and our police. They were above and beyond, just tremendous. Didn't sleep very much, and they chased down every possible avenue, were so thorough, so professional, so kind. But they are looking out for the residents of Linden, you have no idea what they are protecting us from. We just really have no idea what's right under our noses and right next door, coming through our city. And so I am so grateful to him and to them for what they did. And it's gonna be an ongoing investigation, more will come out in the media. And along with that, because we do have, you know, Jake mentioned, you know, the Dry Canyon area where we, people can stage to some of our trails, there's been some concerns there, as well as, you know, just our parks and our public spaces. And so I just wanted to let council know, I've asked chief, he's aware of some potential surveillance technology, and I've asked him to go ahead and research some of that and look at some ways that maybe we could have some additional technology available within our community to keep us absolutely the safest place in Utah Valley. So, thank you again. Yes. All right, and thank you, council members. This was a very long council member report session, and I just have to thank these guys. They absolutely are so engaged, they bring their A-game, they're so passionate about what they're doing. No one is casual in this role whatsoever. I hope you can feel that they are truly serving and committed. Couldn't work with a more incredible, amazing bunch here, and love these guys, all of you. Okay, so moving forward, we have our administrators' report, sorry, didn't mean to cut that off there, Adam.
Thanks, just, just a brief review of what's there, enlisted, Chief Brower, we have you identified as the newsletter for September, so let's do the last week in August, Kathy Mosman. And then just upcoming events in the city, September twelfth is our citywide drill at six PM that night. We have that joint meeting with the North County Cities, September twenty-sixth at six PM at the community center. There's a vaccination clinic that the Utah County Health Department will do here in this room, October twenty-first, and that's open to the general public from two to four PM on October twenty-first. And then I do need to get your feedback on a couple items really quick here. We noticed on our schedule of public meetings and holidays, we're required by state code to publish these each year, and looking ahead to some issues coming up in December and November, or December and January. We had listed New Year's Day observed as being December thirtieth, it's a Friday. Actually, that is the Monday, the following Monday is the observed date. And then we had identified a city council meeting on that day of January second, which is the observed New Year's Day. We would like to recommend that be moved to January third, it's a Tuesday night. So that's a change. And then also, that month in January, on the second meeting is Martin Luther King Day, so that would also be recommended to be moved from the third Monday to the third Tuesday, so the third and the seventeenth. Any concerns with that, on those meeting dates in January?
I could probably make one of them.
Okay. Sound okay, all right, we'll publish that and get a new one to put out on an official agenda then, and change that holiday date. The other item that we wanted to get your quick feedback on, you're all aware of our arena project for the widening. The city received a two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar grant, which we have a match on, about, just not quite fifty percent. The consultant that we've been working with, and Heath, they've been looking at different panels that could go around these areas of the arena. Just as a reminder, the arena right now is just a metal rail with posts, and then a wire fence is what we have in place right now. And then, of course, the panels that are at the end of the arena. We've discussed this with the mayor, and she wanted to get your feedback on this, and this is, again, feedback, that there are some less expensive rails that are untreated, not coated, they will rust over time. To put in this type of rail with an addition of some mesh, wire mesh on there, there's been concerns of animals getting a hoof through there, or kids putting their hands through there. And just to show you, this is a photo from one of our Linden Days events. People do have a tendency to hug those rails during the events. People are right on top of it, right next to it, and so the mesh will be added to any panels that we put in, so keep that in mind. On the panels themselves, then, an option, it would save about eighteen thousand dollars to go with these types of panels that would rust, they are not painted or coated. The other option would be a powder-coated brown or green panel. Unfortunately, the company that makes the chutes that we've gotten bids from, they only produce those in the green, and so we would have green chutes at the end, no matter what. But the question the mayor wanted to bring forward to you is the preference on this color, brown or green, and if you're willing to look at probably a twenty-to-twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase between these types of panels to a powder-coated panel. Quick thoughts on that.
Not a big fan of the rusting-out materials.
You think it, yeah.
I think it defeats the purpose of what we originally were trying to do by aesthetically, as well as from the utility standpoint, I think it would be a mess if we didn't go with some kind of protective.
You have a lot of kids and dads and moms are gonna have really rusty hands if they go to the rodeo.
Similarly, okay. And we do have some funds from the park tax that we can put towards this, and so that helps us with that direction. Now tell us on, is there a color preference, knowing that the end of those, at the end of the chutes, most of this is gonna be the green color down here?
Both of them looked great.
Yeah, I'm indifferent.
Either one.
I can't match.
There you go, Mayor.
Looks kinda cool. Anybody out there, what do you think?
A horse enthusiast.
Green or brown?
I think green.
I like green.
He's telling me go green, I'm with green.
The continuity of the same green, if you can't, if you can't get the chutes, I'd hate to see the mix and match, unless you have some sort of a distinct plan for the mix and the match of the colors. I actually prefer the brown, but I wouldn't want to have the mix and the match.
So with those panels, in addition, then, if we're gonna powder coat those and have them fabricated, we would add this wire mesh that's then powder coated to the same green color, and so it'll all look very nice, so.
Brown is the preferred color, but the issue of the chutes.
But if we could maybe even coordinate where they're at, there's, I think that you could do something aesthetic in the combination of the two, but just off the shooting from the hip, I can't do it from here.
Color, preference?
Not a preference.
Not a preference, okay.
We're okay with the green.
But if someone was passionate about the brown, I could be talked into it.
Maybe if we had a lunch at Pete's factory, discuss it, might be able to.
Put it on the agenda.
We'll head towards the green, is what I'm hearing, so, thank you very much.
All right, anything else, Adam, on your administrators' report?
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good. Any other comments from staff at this point during our reports? Okay, very good. All right, well, we'll move forward to item number six, this is the approval of the minutes from our July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two council meeting. Any comments or adjustments for Kathy?
I don't have any, I'll make a motion.
I have, I have one quick one, but hold that thought, Jake, anyone else? Kathy, the gentleman who gave the pledge was Glenn Mitchell, not Glenn Smith. I did notice that, I forgot, okay.
Change, I'll make a motion to approve the July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two city council minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Is humanamis, all right, thank you. And then moving on, now we have our item number seven, our consent agenda. This is reviewing some new liaison assignments and a resolution for some surplus items. I'll turn the time over to Adam Cowie.
So what we have is just a request by the mayor to, for your consideration on this resolution. This is adding the assignments to Councilmember Daryl Magillby for a historical commission liaison assignment, and then also the 2024 Centennial Celebration. The mayor's discussed that she would like somebody to head that up from the council, and felt that Daryl would do a good job at that, so.
All right. And certainly, that, the whole 2024 hundred. And certainly that the whole 2024 100-year anniversary is going to be a wonderful, significant thing that we're looking forward to and will want to include all the council suggestions and ideas. But Daryl has expressed the desire and the time and the and he's served in the capacity with historical commission before, and I think he'd be fantastic to help out with this. So any questions or in regard to that resolution? Shall we pass these together then? Do you want to go ahead and present the surplus items?
The other item is just our surplus, typical surplus resolutions that we have for extra equipment that we're trying to dispose of. We'll have this flatbed trailer and then this 2004 F-150. They are listed there with the information about those, and those will be posted on publicsurplus.com where anyone can bid on those items.
All right.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolutions number 2022-16-R, council liaison assignment for Daryl Magalby, and resolution number 2022-17-R relating to surplus items.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Vanschiri.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Magalby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's all ayes. Thank you very much. All right. So number eight, this is a review and action item regarding the fencing and gate request along Anderson Boulevard. So we'll go ahead and turn this over to staff and invite those individuals who need to present on this.
So we we've received in a request by some residents that live off of Newfield Circle and this is in the Ivory Homes Anderson Farms development along Anderson Boulevard. The city and the developer Ivory Homes had planned some pedestrian connections that would connect to Anderson Boulevard. There's there's several of these connections that are throughout the community. We've included in your staff report, this is in a photo of that location. The intent of this was a crosswalk location that could then provide some easier pedestrian or bicycle access into the neighborhoods. The neighborhood has submitted a request to enclose this or to to enclose it with a gate at that crossing. And so let me run through some photos here involved. This is a picture from the cul-de-sac itself, looking out on Anderson Boulevard through that opening. It's about 20 feet wide and the intent of this is to connect across the street. Ivory Homes is aware that they will be taking out a section of the fence on the east side of the roadway, and there'll be a similar sidewalk connection back into the cul-de-sac on the east side of their development there. This is looking north, just south of the area, there's the opening there as as you approach that in a vehicle. There are some other similar connections. This is one that's down by the roundabout, just a little further south from this, has a sidewalk connection. This is one that's just across the street and south of about 400 or 500 feet. Alpine School District has purchased this vacant field here and has identified that they're looking at a future school site, we believe elementary school. They have not informed us of when that would be constructed, but they have purchased and closed on the property. So this trail connection heads east and then also connects to this other road on 500 North there through the neighborhood. This is a picture from the other side of that connection, and then it turns north and goes into a connection there. So really, the intent of a lot of these were to just provide easier access, more direct access for pedestrians and bicyclists in the community. One thing that we found, there is road striping further north. So this is towards 700 North. There's the center medians and then the shoulders have stripes there. Those stripes have not been installed further south on this roadway on Anderson Boulevard. And so that is something that our city engineers have put together a a striping plan that's identified here. The crossing that we're looking at is this one. And so the intent is as we near completion with Ivory on this section of the project, that they would be working with the city and installing bike lanes on both sides of the roadway and then narrowing the shoulders with striping. Striping has been found in in multiple studies and in projects that we've done to help calm traffic. It slows people down. And so we would expect that would be the case here. The city did perform some recent traffic studies along Anderson Boulevard within the last month. We've had traffic counts and speeds recorded in two locations. One was just just south, a couple hundred feet of this current crossing location. The 85th percentile speed is a phrase that the engineers utilize in all of their traffic manuals. The recommendations are that speed should typically be posted at this level, which indicates 85% or more of, or excuse me, 85% of the traffic on the roadway is traveling at this speed. So this was recorded at 30 miles per hour. So 85% are going 30 or less in a 25 mile per hour zone. Based on some of our other studies, this is actually a very slow speed for a residential area. And so this would be considered a a fairly conforming speed for a 25 mile per hour zone. Further north, there was another study, again, done within the last month, that the 85th percentile speed was listed at 36. And then we did a traffic count over near Meadow Park, which is on 1700 West. This was about a year and a half ago, and it was measured at 35 miles per hour. So these are just just three that we've looked at in in this general neighborhood, just to give you an idea of of some of the speeds that we have in these residential zones. We did, as we've as we've talked with with Mr. Snyder, who's who's been kind of the primary voice in the request to staff, there was a comment made that perhaps this land, which is currently owned by the city, could be deeded. This area of the sidewalk could be deeded or dedicated to the HOA, and the HOA could install a fence or a gate. We've reached out to the Ivory Homes president, who Ivory is still the majority of the HOA ownership there, and they they are included there in email from their president, who indicated they were very in favor of keeping this open and did not want to accept the land as part of the HOA. The city, as we talked with Mr. Snyder, we've let him know, we do have underground utilities, water and sewer that that connect from the cul-de-sac, shown in the photo there, across the street. It's part of our looped line system. And so we would be concerned about placing a solid structure wall over that. It will have to be replaced or maintained at some point in time in the future. And so access to the utilities is is one item of concern. The other that we've included, a a letter from the city attorney, Brian Hawes, enclosing a a fenced access with a gate poses a significant liability to the city. Where this is a current opening that we have no legal obligation to to fence it or gate it. If the city who owns the land were to install a gate, if that were somehow left open and not closed, we could then be found liable for not keeping that secured if somebody were to get out and and an accident happened. Mr. Hawes cited in his memo to you several court cases and one that was specific, almost identical to this situation, in which an entity was found liable for installing a gate, which was then left left open at a later date. So with with the desire to maintain that open pedestrian and bicyclist access through the neighborhood was the original intent of a lot of these connections, the liability of concern of fencing or gating that. And then with the utilities that are in place, staff is recommending that that a fence not be installed in this location. And we've conveyed that to to Mr. Snyder previously. We had discussed earlier on, this has been a discussion for several months, and we had presented an option where where engineers felt to have some sort of a zigzag gate or fenced with a permanent smaller opening could be an option. And so something of this nature is is something I think the city was willing to entertain, but but not have that gated or closed in a permanent fashion. And so just as an FYI, this was an an exhibit that Noah Gordon, our city engineer, prepared. Questions?
You could see through the gate. It would not be an obscure.
Yeah. The intent of this was more of this wrought iron type of look and something that you could see through, but that would not be permanently gated. This would be, if anybody's ever been on a track station, they have these types of zigzags with fences to to make people slow down and look both ways, but not be a permanent gate.
What's the opinion of staff for for that?
I think we were open to this type of concept. There was request from Mr. Snyder. We haven't met in person. Are you are you Mr. Snyder?
I'm not Mr. Snyder.
No?
He's.
Okay. So we've had a lot of emails go back and forth. So a request from Mr. Snyder to do something different than this, so.
Adam, just a question or or Brian, what how does that differ? I know that that doesn't have a gate, but it does seem to provide some, the intent of protection.
It's all about the the expectation.
Yes.
That the party has. And so if you have an open gate, it's not, you know, an open pathway that's not obstructed, there's no expectation that it's going to to keep a child enclosed in an area.
Okay.
If you put a gate that closes and locks, and then there's an expectation that that gate will be maintained and kept in a good condition so that it will function properly, and then there's a reliance on that. The case that Adam mentioned before was actually a Salt Lake City case back in the mid 1990s, where they put a fence along the Jordan River at a park. And there was a car backed in and and broke down the gate. A small boy unfortunately got through that opening and and drowned. And the Supreme Court, the trial court said, hey, there's no obligation, there's no legal duty for a municipality to to fence off rivers and waterways. But and so they dismissed the case against the city. But on appeal, the Utah Supreme Court said, yeah, we recognize that there is no obligation to do that fencing. But once a municipality decides and takes it upon themselves to to put that fence in place, then they have an obligation to maintain it because the people using that park have an expectation that that will be protected or that access will be blocked. And so that that's really where, from the legal standpoint, that's where I'm coming down saying, there is no, there is no legal obligation for us to to put up a fence or to to do this type of thing. There we've got, we've got thousands of residents living on very busy streets in in our city. We have no legal obligation to to monitor or 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 stop access across those roads. But if we put in a gated fence here, then we are taking that responsibility on us, and it's one that will be ongoing and continuous. And if something happens, and again, a gate is going to fail, especially one that's used every single day by the public, your springs are going to wear out, you're going to get corrosion. We have, you know, at some point, if that gate fails and a child gets through that gate, we face significant liability.
But you make a legal distinction between not having a gate and having a gate?
Oh, absolutely. Because, again, it's the expectation. If there's no gate in this scenario, then there's no expectation.
Now, I didn't catch this gentleman's name.
My name is Mark Shifano, and I live right on that opening.
All right.
And first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak, and and I understand everything that was said. The one thing I would say is it sure feels like Anderson Boulevard is is a grand prix. It does feel like people are going a little bit faster than what was stated. We were one of the first ones, if not the first one, on Newfield Circle. And because I live where I do, I can tell you what I've witnessed with the opening. I've seen kids, not so much from Newfield Circle, but maybe from other neighborhoods, come whipping in on their bikes, and they're leaving on their bikes and they're going really fast. It might not just be pedal bikes, it might be e-bikes that I've seen. I've seen kids, I've seen preteens, young adults, flying through the neighborhood, almost through our grass, and then having to make a hard right to stay on the sidewalk. And I'm going to tell you that they mostly don't. They end up in the street a little bit. So because that road is there, I worry about safety, and this is about safety. I'm very concerned about kids that might be running around on the sidewalk, worried about kids from Newfield Circle that might be going out, worried about, and there are a lot of, I'm not from here, I just moved here, so there's a lot of cyclists, and I think that's awesome. But they're coming in and out of the neighborhood, look, as fast as they can. Who wouldn't at that age? At 10 years old, you want to go as fast as you can. They're not making the turn, and I'm very concerned that a tragedy may happen. Very concerned about that. Dogs, stray dogs, dogs that get out of houses. We've we've corralled a couple stray dogs, looked at their tags and and made calls. So there's dogs that get out. I'm concerned about that tragedy as well. I'm a dog lover, so I'm a little concerned about that. So I get that the opening is there. To me and to my neighbors, it seems odd that we have that opening in the circle, because it's not really a circle now, it's a circle with a gap. What I see every day and what I'm concerned about is it's going to be a tragedy. There's somebody's going to get hit. Or because people are coming around that really curvy road, especially when there's ice, and I've seen that, I've seen a minivan kind of lose control and go into the curb, I'm concerned about the combination of some of the safetiness of that road and the scenarios that I just mentioned about cyclists or kids running or maybe even dogs. I just think we're waiting for a tragedy. So I'm not here to say we need a gate. I'm here to say we have to address it in some way. I really feel strongly, and so do my my neighbors who are here, that we do something about it. Because when I walked into this room, I heard about families, I heard about people coming together, and I think that is awesome. That's why we live here. But I also want to bring up safety, and I think safety is something that has to be brought into this conversation. I get the legal piece, I'm not even arguing any of that, but safety is what it's about. And that's what all of my neighbors are concerned about as well. So that's the piece I wanted to bring.
A follow-up question, though.
Sure.
This scenario that was just presented with the wrought iron fence and the, what did you call it?
The zigzag?
Yeah, zigzag fence. Has the neighborhood group had a chance to look at that, discuss it?
It has been informally discussed. Glade Snyder brought it up to us. I would say that might be a feasible solution.
All right.
I think there's two concerns. There's one.
May I just, may I just, let's just, sorry, let me just get a little point of clarification in the meeting. So for this portion, with this being an official agenda item, I'd appreciate it if you could have maybe a couple representatives and then go ahead and please address the council here at the table and states your name. And and then as there might be additional comments, if if you could limit it, you know, once something has been stated. Safety, we we get it. Thank you so much, Mr. Shifano. But thank you. All right. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Paul Garing. So I think that there are two concerns. One is keeping little kids from going out onto Anderson Boulevard, because I would, I understand the study that says it's 30 miles per hour. That's got to be an average, because I've.
85th percentile.
Right. I'm just saying, I watch people just come flying down that street, which I'm sure happens on every street. But so the concern is keeping the younger kids from venturing out onto that street and getting hit. But then there's also the concern of keeping people we don't necess, I mean, we're in a little cul-de-sac, there's really no reason for through traffic to come through our neighborhood. There's really nowhere that they need to go through there. So I I think the zigzag is a viable option, but it doesn't necessarily keep the young kids from going out. They can find their way out there. I, what's that?
That's what parents are for.
Right. Thank you for your help. That's appreciated. Anyways. Oh, that's frustrating, but I'll keep my mouth shut.
All right.
Can I say one more thing real quick? I I also think I don't understand the need, i- if there's pedestrian traffic or bicycle traffic, I think that's fine. I just don't understand the need for, I mean, I don't know how wide the opening is, but you could, I have not witnessed it, but my daughter told me that her friend drove a car through it, which isn't something you should be through, be able to do through a pedestrian walkway, but it's it's like 30 feet wide.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your comments very much. All right, council, this is a review.
Appreciate your comments as well.
An action item.
Just a point of clarification, then. So, our recommendations as staff is to move forward with the continued striping along Anderson Boulevard, and our city engineers are looking at additional signage that could be installed before and after the crosswalk there on north and south sides. And then, the zigzag fencing is certainly an option. I threw up there really quick on the, of the screen, this is a very simplified version of that, you may have seen at schoolyards, of that same kind of zigzag option. It is open, it is accessible. Our engineers do recommend at least a four-foot wide width, because it needs to be ADA compatible, but something like this would be the very simplified version of that zigzag concept. The city had discussed in some emails with Mr. Snyder, our understanding was, there was some willingness from the neighbors to help pay for a fence there, and that seemed to change over the few months that we had talked about this, and so, there's not currently a funding avenue that I'm aware of for this. So, this would be, if the city chose to put it in, this would be your decision of how and if that is installed.
All right. Did our engineers have any data points regarding once, you know, striping is added to narrow the lane and create a dedicated bicycle lane as well as crosswalks, what their, what the typical findings are, how that helps with controlling traffic or speeds? Or visual mitigation?
They did not indicate that this, hey, this will decrease speeds by X amount, is that what your question is?
I remember in the engineering meeting, they did discuss, though, that those are elements that help with traffic calming.
Correct.
And awareness.
And so, narrowing that by the striping has been proven to decrease traffic speeds in other scenarios, in and outside of Linden, and so, we would expect that 85th percentile of 30 miles per hour to actually decrease if we were to stripe this.
There currently is the central median, and they would create a crosswalk striping as, do we know?
Correct.
Timeline when that is looking, seems like they mentioned August might be?
Yeah, this is hopefully within the next few months.
Okay, so this could be sometime this season.
Correct.
This could be put in fairly soon. All right. Council, any questions or discussion?
The gap does seem really wide. Is that, was that part of the master plan? Is that part of our...
That is part of the utilities, so it's a little bit hard to tell. There's a couple manholes here, and so, we have utilities that cross here and then connect into Anderson Boulevard. And Mike, do you recall, do they go over to this other cul-de-sac as well?
They do.
Okay. As I recall, I think they connect all the way over to this other cul-de-sac, and hence, that was part of these connections.
That's why it's a little bigger than what we normally see.
So, it's a utility corridor. Typically, our easements, if they are on private property, would be 20 feet wide, and so, there's about a 20-foot opening, which would enable a piece of equipment or machinery to get through that if that needed to be worked on. And so, as you're aware, we have occasional water breaks or repairs that we have to excavate in those areas, and so, I think the zigzag fence option was trying to find a middle ground that we felt wasn't a permanent enclosure, something that was a little easier to remove and replace if we had to, when we have to dig up this line, so.
All right. I don't know if Jake had anything else to say.
That was my question.
Okay. If I may, Mayor, this area of town is a lot of, are a lot of new residents for Linden, right? A lot of you first-time Linden residents buying down in that area. This has been a fun project for us to watch happen. This is an area that we hadn't seen developed, and we added all the density down there. Also, it was so important that we had connectability as part of the master plan, and this is part of that connectability that we know makes it, apparently, we're seeing something of a concern. I will say, thank you so much for raising your concerns and coming to us. I acknowledge you as having busy schedules and getting together. You haven't just put out a few emails, I guess that you've had a few meetings. I've been part of those kind of things in my end of town, and I just wanna say that I understand when you have concerns and you want to get together and try to problem solve that. Our goal together is to do that together. With elected officials, our job is to be able to watch out for the needs of all of our citizens. So, as you see that we went through a master plan many years in the making, and many of us were here during that time, watching how that worked. I raised my family on a collector road, I've been in Linden over 25 years, whatever, but I spent 22 years on a collector road and raised my small children, and I understand when you say it's a raceway. 400 East was, when we moved there, it did not connect to Pleasant Grove, and to have that open up, which was on the master plan, was something we as parents had to adapt to. And I know that you're all capable people and will help be able to manage your children and, but I understand that you want to be, have the most safe opportunity. This is a kind of unique thing, we haven't had to face this, because we have usually typically 1,200, I'm sorry, 1,200 square foot to 20,000 square foot acreage for homes, and you have the smaller locations and a lot more people that are coming through there. My hope is that we can mitigate as much problem as possible, but I'm not seeing anything other than maybe the zigzag for me at this point is something that I could entertain based on the recommendation, so that's where I'm standing with this, Mayor. All right, thank you, Councilmember Powell. Any other comments or discussion, questions? All right, Mr. Snyder, would you like to...
Well, I just, you know, I understand that this is put together as a sort of community. I went through and I talked to every single person in that...
I would, would you do me a favor? We do have to record the meeting, and also, some people are watching online. If you could please join us here at the table and speaker in the microphone, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I think everyone that is a parent can sympathize that you can't control your kids all the time, right? My wife is incredible, and she watches our kids really well, and it only takes three seconds. And when it was proposed, we appreciate the proposal of the zigzag. The reason we pushed back is because a kid can still run out pretty quick. And unless you've got a chain on them or something like that, which is not how we do it, they have their own minds, and sometimes you're just distracted. But I went through, and I understand, you wanted to make it an open community. I went through and said, all right, well, does the community want this? And I talked to several neighbors in the neighborhood over that would come in and access that. I also talked to, and I have a thing where I have every single person sign on there, whether or not they wanted that cul-de-sac open or closed, and every single one of them, the people that would access it, wanted it closed just for safety concerns. And all of those other ones you pointed out, I understand, but they have like, was that like 50 yards before they get to a main road? And right there, literally, my kids are like 20 feet from getting to that, to that main road. And when you're driving around that bend, it's definitely a blind spot. I'm just a dad, trying to protect my kids, and that's why I've been pushing and working so hard on this. So, yeah, I just don't understand how safety of our kids and everything else can be put to the side compared to, you know, we'll take six of those railings that you can, that you're gonna put for that rodeo thing and just slap it on there, and we'd be happy. You know what I mean? Like, we just really want to make that place a safe place for our kids. So, that's what I wanted to bring up, that, you know, this is for the community, and I've gotten the community, got plenty of signatures of 50 houses or so that have all been in favor of making it more safe. The reason we wanted to push past the zigzag is because we just wanna make it safe, safe as possible. People are willing to walk 50 yards northeast to get into that neighborhood, rather than saving 20 feet to get into that neighborhood by just having it closed off. And we thought the zigzag access is harder for you to get the utility access. If we just had a iron rod fence across, it'd be easier to get the access to the utilities. So, just wanted to bring up that, I did get signatures from the, both neighborhoods on this matter. And I understand this is to help the neighborhood, right?
Right.
This was planned for us to enjoy, and if it's something that not everyone enjoyed, and I actually talked to people that are moving into that cul-de-sac on the bottom right, and they're not aware that it's gonna be opened up either, and they don't love the idea either, so.
So, was this, at the time of purchase, was this an unforeseen?
To be honest, I actually talked to everyone, all of us looked at it, we thought it was gonna be closed, 'cause we thought it was the weirdest thing. We, wouldn't you agree? We all looked at it, and we were like, there is no way.
Construction thing.
Yeah, we thought it was a construction thing, that people were bringing it in, and the other people in the other cul-de-sac have no idea, they just think it's gonna be closed, and I brought it up to a few of them, and, you know, just before we start opening up cul-de-sacs, we might wanna think about it and what our plans were. That's all I ask.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Sorry.
All right. Very good. Appreciate the comments here this evening. All right. Council, I turn this back to you. So, we, does our administrator have any additional information for us?
Just our staff recommendation from our engineers and public works, and from our attorney, our first preference would be not to have a fence or a gate of any sort, and then, second, if you choose to fence that in some option, we would strongly recommend that it has to be some sort of opening through there, not a gate.
I am very sympathetic. I have six children, 26 grandchildren, most of them young. I'm not unsympathetic to your plight. As members of the council, however, I, I think, you know, we have neither the time nor the technical expertise to do the types of in-depth studies that our city staff does, our engineers, our traffic engineers and so forth, and given the legal ramifications of gating or blocking that off, I don't see really any option we have other than leaving it, leaving it open. You know, the zigzag fence could maybe help some. I don't see it actually solving the issue completely. So, my inclination would be to take the recommendations of staff and city attorney and deny closing that off with a gate.
But you would be open to installing something to narrow the opening?
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
All right, very good.
But it does, it does beg the question of who's going to pay for it. I mean, it's not gonna be that expensive, but I'm sure that's something that can be worked out.
My name is John Ellis. Can I make a suggestion? Can you make some sort of fence that can be removed in the case of having to access the utilities? In other words, put in some temporary things? I know I can do it in vinyl fencing, why can't you do it in this kind of a situation where you could block it off in some way so that it would keep the thing and still maintain the access for the utilities?
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I think, speaking back to, I think the answer partially, yes, certainly, there's some options here on the table to consider, and I think the overall master plan of the community was to have some pathways and accessibility, you know, multimodal opportunities for bicycling, pedestrian, accessing the park, accessing the future school. Certainly Ivory's overall master plan to have walkability, connectivity was what they had in mind and what the agreement with the city, that was a thought going forward with why we have what we have today. So, that begs the question of closing access, has some ramifications potentially that need to be considered, and we hear you certainly very much. And so, you know, it's up to council to, you know, consider those pros and those cons back and forth, and I don't know necessarily the feasibility of 100% closing it off. Certainly, some of these other factors, would you agree would mitigate if we have striping and crosswalk and signage and potential lessening of the opening would be a help? May not be the end result of what you would fully desire at this time, but those could be some good faith efforts, hopefully. But I would like to hear from council if what's being presented is a full closure is something that you would consider that they've requested.
I can give my opinion, I'm sympathetic, this is hard. I think, you know, I think about my kids. I've got a two-year-old who runs out in the street. We live in a cul-de-sac, he runs through our yard, through the next neighbor's yard and into the, into the road. 200 South, 2,000 North is where my in-laws live. We spend a lot of time up there, they live on that busy road, and it's unfortunate, but we just can't have our kids in the front, in the front yard. We keep them in the back at all times with two locked gates, and they just, they can't get out front because it is too dangerous. I'm sympathetic, because if I lived in this neighborhood, I would 100% be with you, because it makes it so much better if we close it off. That neighborhood, values go up, it makes it so much better if we close that up. And so, I think if I was in there with you, I'd be fighting with you, but we have to look at this from a total community standpoint, from a master's plan standpoint, from a legal standpoint, which makes it really hard. I'm trying to think of some win-wins here. Is there a way for us to find a win-win? I'm open to looking at those ideas, certain, some of these mitigating factors, striping the road, the zigzag, I'm open to, 'cause at least it mitigates that safety a little bit.
Close it down.
And so, I'm certainly open to those, those options. It's just, you know, it's just tough, unfortunately. You know, I, unfortunately, I agree with staff, I think they're telling us exactly what needs to happen there, unfortunately, right?
Tough decision.
I think we all can agree, no parents can just freely let their kids be in the street, right? Because then our neighbors can back into them, you know, just even cars going up and in and out of driveways, guests coming, I mean, there's always, you always have to keep your eye on your kids regardless, you can't just let them, especially toddlers, freely run in the street, but certainly, we, safety is absolutely the primary goal at this point. So, I hope that, you know, council, you can kinda come together on this and figure out a way to certainly improve the situation as it stands at this point. I'm so appreciative of the recommendations that the staff has been giving us on the pro side, not on the con, on the what we can't do, that you've been showing us options. Yes, we do need to put the striping in, that'll help increase knowledge that, where people should be driving, not that they shouldn't know anyway, but also the opportunity to put in a zigzag. I, I'm the mother of five children and 12 grandchildren, one great-grandchild, yes, that dates me, but they, they always, my oldest was six and a half when my fifth one was born, and no twins. Trying to keep those kids together, yes, I, it was not that many years ago, you would think, that I remember that, the duties of having to be a stay-at-home mom and watching those babies and praying that they'd stay safe, locks on my gates when we lived in California, to be wearful of dangers of any kind. And again, raise my children, for the most part, on 400 East, off of Center Street, close to all these schools, a lot of danger in that area, and we had to have the rules, like Jake has said, that they can only have so much access to the front yard. Fortunately, we, the only thing we lost was a cat and no children. But, so my heart is with you. I appreciate your involvement, I appreciate your heart, but again, like Councilmember Hoyt said, our goal, I mean, our responsibility is to the city as a whole, and I'd have been right there just like that, I did things like this in my own neighborhood. You will make your community, your small community there, a better community by what you're doing, and by doing that, you will make Linden a better community by your interacting with each other. But for me, I have to keep my responsibilities as an elected official that represents the whole city to make sure that we're doing this in the best way possible, the best practices, and through the proper legal ways and restrictions that we have. So, I'd say, for me, put as much possible on signage, just as much as we can, and we'll have to figure out if we can do the zigzag.
My position would be what's been already said, articulated by Mike and Randy and Jake. I feel for all of the citizens in that area, and if I would have not known that that was not going to be put in, I probably wouldn't have bought a property in there at the time. And that's, needs to be communicated going forward if any of you sell your homes in the future, that, if that is left open, then that's what it's going to be going forward. My concern is that we are maybe not in a position to make a decision tonight, that maybe we... My concern is that we are maybe not in a position to make a decision tonight, that maybe we continue this conversation and, and be more educated down the road. My opinion right now would be, the best-case scenario would be to, to a zigzag option there. I would not be in favor of closing that completely at this point.
I guess I just have a question. What, what would be the benefit, knowing that we, we all agree that there's no option to, to close it? And it seems like the most palatable compromise might be the zigzag fence. I, I'm just wondering what benefit would there be to?
Continue the item?
To continue the item. That, you know, I, I think these good folks are looking for some closure, one way or the other.
Right.
And it doesn't appear likely that we're gonna be able to, to say, hey, we need to, we need to close it. It doesn't appear to be an option. So again, respect your opinion, of course.
You know, until, you know, I read everything that was presented to me, but I don't remember a zigzag option that was on the, on the staff report earlier. And so that was a surprise to me, but.
That email was included in there. Yeah, it's on.
It was towards the end, but I, I, I get where Daryl's coming from. We don't wanna just tell him, no, it's, it's, 'cause I think a lot of us are open to that zigzag option, but I don't know if the community even wants that. And so maybe it's a no to this request with a invitation to continue to look for some options and we can see if we find an amenable option.
You know, to that end of the suggestion of a permanent-type fence, but can be removed with, the average person couldn't remove it, to see what the liabilities of that are and how that would work or what consequences that causes.
You know, that's certainly an option. It's, it's really, the, the original intent was to provide for that pedestrian access and connectivity. And so are, are we then looking at closing other connections would be my question. Are we gonna open the east side of the roadway? And currently, that's on Ivory's radar to do that. Do we close off the other connection that's five-hundred feet away on the roundabout? I mean, there's those, those kinda questions that, that I guess that would spark in my mind. This, this is one currently right now that's installed right on the roundabout and is, is used by the neighborhood. And so.
And part of speaking with the school district as well, I mean, the school district in acquiring that ground recently, just this past few months, for them, walkability for the neighborhood school is certainly something that is a benefit for the school-aged children so they can get off of Anderson Boulevard at the earliest time they can and get into their immediate neighborhood streets as well.
And I appreciate that. That's how it was designed and that's the appeal of it. I, I, I'm okay with the mitigation items that are listed, with the fence, with the zigzag type of concept and then the, the striping and such as well and signage.
Alright. One of the other points that was raised by staff is if there was going to be any sort of a, a lessening of the opening or closure with, via Z-fencing, is this something counsel would be willing to appropriate the funding for?
And Mayor, can I just make a point?
Yes.
If, if we decide to put in the Z-fencing in this location, legally speaking, we probably need to look at other locations because it's an acknowledgement of a risk that we need to take, you know, that's, that's there. And so if we put in the Z to slow stuff down here, but we don't do it across the street, you know, it would, it, it wouldn't have to be in every single location, but in locations that are similar to traffic patterns and similar designs with cul-de-sacs, we probably should seriously consider putting in those same types of zigzag fences in those locations as well.
Have the engineers determined, helped us determine where those should go or could go?
Right, right, exactly.
Let me ask this question just quickly. Say, say for example, we decide to, to not close it. We make that official action tonight. Would, again, just hypothetically, if the residents came back and said, okay, we're willing to do the zigzag fence at our expense, would, we, we could allow that? Is that something they would have to get a permit for? What would they, what would they have to do to?
It would just be negotiating with the city on, on paying for that improvement and then working with our engineers to see where it's best to put that. And, and the removable panel option is a great idea. And so.
Well, I, I kinda see the two as, as separate, separate items. I think the issue we're voting on tonight is, is whether to close it or not. And then if there's some, some good ideas, some good discussions come up that are maybe feasible, they could come back again and discuss that with the council.
Can I throw one more thing out there as a question? And that would be if we were to, if we were to have residents pay for this, how do we go forward with that, Brian, if we're saying that, oh, well, here it's needed, but we'll have to wait till the citizens initiate it on another situation like that? That doesn't seem like it would be.
There's a, legally, there's a distinct circumstance that would differentiate that between. You've got citizens coming up and, and volunteering to, to take on the burden and the cost because they feel that it's, that it's beneficial to them. It's not necessarily an acknowledgement by the city that there is a, a safety issue when we decide to allocate funds and to, to install the fence on our own. Do you understand the difference there? Really, it's, it's all about precedents that we're setting. If we come in and say, okay, we recognize this traffic pattern creates a risk enough that we are going to allocate public funds to put in a zigzag.
Then we have to do it more across the board.
Then we have to do it across the board.
Versus the other way.
Whereas if we're negotiating with some neighbors who said, hey, we would like to do this.
Then that limits our liability if they're initiating it.
So just, just for clarification, we, our engineers and our public works and, and our attorney, myself, we do not see this as warranting an enclosure. So we, we have multiple homes on twenty-five mile-per-hour roadways throughout the city. This is not unique in any fashion as far as speeds or traffic hazards. So I wanna make sure that's clear as far as our standpoint, our opinions on this. There, there's homes that front on collector roads that, that have higher speeds than this. And so that, I, I just wanna make sure that that's clear, that that is, that is the recommendation, that this not be fenced or enclosed because it is not meeting a warrant for such an enclosure. You can choose to, to do that if you want to, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Alright. Well, it has been proposed potentially to continue, or is counsel ready to take action tonight on this?
I'm not in a position to, to vote on this tonight. I would prefer to continue this.
I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Daryl, are there specific things you would like to see happen or information provided that helps you get to a position where you could decide one way or the other?
Well, if we choose a zigzag concept, I would then want to know what that requires the city to do at other locations in, down in Anderson or other places within the city. It might become this big ballooning expense that we're not aware of because of, we do it here, where else do we have to do it to appease the citizens?
I think that's the point, though. If, if we don't vote in this motion to consider it, I think, I think our attorney has been crystal clear on, if the citizens want to do it, that's a different story. We don't have a liability. This could set a precedent where everybody in the city that has a similar situation would come in and petition the city for us to do the same thing here, which, you know, in my estimation, I don't think you could assign a number to it, but again, by just, by just making the decision not to do anything and allowing the, the good citizens here to propose something that, that the staff could agree to and say, yeah, fine, if you wanna put it up at your expense, to me, that's a whole different issue than even the city considering paying for it or taking the time and effort to design it. I mean, that, that just, that just includes a whole different bag of, of.
So what would a motion be that I would vote on tonight? Well, formulate it in words for, for my benefit.
A possibility.
Say again?
What, what's in your brain? What, what, if you, if you were to now make a motion, what would it kinda look like?
Well, I think the motion is, is, I think the motion is plain. It's, it's, we, we vote not to close it. And then again, if the citizens, these citizens, any other citizens have creative, productive, feasible ideas, then that's another time, another issue.
I could second that.
They could, they can come in and they can make their presentations. We can act on it again. We can continue to have ongoing discussions. But I, I think at, at some level, there needs to be closure on this.
No pun intended.
No, oh boy. No pun intended. I'm sorry.
Alright.
That was bad.
I, I think we all can agree, though, looking at this, if we have an issue of safety, this is a collector. I would, I think we can all agree, there will be more traffic as this community develops. And if we think there is, for the general public, an issue or concern regarding safety, then why not have it be something that the city takes seriously to have a mitigating Z-fence at the very least? Or something that makes that, that opening not quite as large. It is unusually large. And if we're going to be looking at, the connectivity is a valuable thing that we do want to have, we need to make a decision sooner than later in regards to how that other, that wall across the road will be treated.
But why wouldn't Mayor, why wouldn't we wanna take it on a case-by-case basis? By, by doing that tonight, we in essence open the door to any and everybody that wants to come in and say, we've got a similar situation. What's the city gonna do about it?
To Mike's point, I, I, to me, it's, it's so hard for me to legis, to try to legislate on hypothesis for the future to say, if, safety is so important, that's why we are here. This is our duty is safety. We all understand that. But we can't solve all this problem when, when something that we seem to all be agreeing on doesn't, hasn't been communicated to, to us as being palatable to them. And so how can I, we approve that when we don't know if it's something that is palatable? So, yes, I'd like to solve that problem, but that is, doesn't seem to be something that is part, yeah, outside of this motion. So something like that, you know, I could support what you were saying on that, Mike.
And please don't misunderstand. I am incredibly sympathetic. I, I truly am. I, I, I think we just have to look at it as a whole. Your, your grandkids, your kids are far more important to you than, than, than anyone. And my grandkids and my kids are far more important to me than, besides my wife. So, so please understand the spirit in which we're, we're trying to approach this. There, there's so many different masters we're trying to serve. And, and I think, again, I just, I just feel like that if we vote on the issue at hand, then it just gives us time, it gives us more opportunities to hear feasible, perhaps realistic ideas that, that, that might work. And then we can make a decision at that point.
And then denial doesn't stop any of the striping or any of the other things that are already in, are already on the docket that would be happening, correct, Adam?
Correct.
Those are already in motion.
Yep.
If they wanna do the zigzag, they would come, come in and make a formal request for that, if we were denied, denied tonight, right?
That, that, I would hope be part of your motion if, if you feel like that's an appropriate avenue, the zigzag.
I don't think, I think we feel like it's appropriate, but we don't think it's palatable to them. Or we wonder if it's palatable. And we think it might be futile. And I don't know. What is that?
You could certainly form the, the motion to say that if the, if the citizens group wants to come in and do that, the city would, would agree to that.
That, that's the way I would like to see it. I mean, by, by voting and saying part of the motion that we approve a zigzag fence.
If paid for by the citizen.
What, what, who's paying for it?
Well, see, that's what I'm telling you. We, that, that shouldn't even be part of the consideration tonight because that's, that's another whole discussion for another whole time. It could easily be done next week or the next council meeting if we have enough information. We don't even know how much it's gonna cost. We have no idea. We don't know the availability of materials. We don't, we don't, we just, we just don't know.
That's what I'm saying. I can't legislate with the unknown. Usually a staff will give us more recommendation if that were the, what they were recommending.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we can handle it outside of the motion and still do it in a way that's gonna make everybody happy. Well, not everybody's gonna be happy, but. Say again?
Make the motion?
Yeah. Well, okay. You got it? Uh, no. I move to deny the fencing and gate request along Anderson Boulevard as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Laurie? We have a motion by Councilmember Van Cherry, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. Any further discussion by council? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. So, direction to our community at this point, if I understand correctly, counsel, is that the opportunity to still find a mitigating factor, you're all still open to? How you want to proceed with that would be to look for the citizens to come back together. The, the motion has been denied to completely close the opening, but you are open to other possible scenarios?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I kinda see this as a developer coming in and testing the waters with us. We, right now, we've given our thoughts and our opinions, and then the citizens can come back and see if something works.
Alright. And you're open to the citizens coming back with a proposal via staff?
Yeah, Mr. Snyder can coordinate with me on anything.
Okay, with Mr. Cowie. And then if there's something that needs, if there's requests for funding of said issue, you would be willing to listen to that proposal or perhaps should we, would you like to direct staff at this time to investigate or receive any bids for said work of potentially a Z? Or do you wanna wait for citizens to initiate their desires in that regard?
I want to wait. I don't know what the others do, but I wanna wait for it.
I wanna wait. Okay. So, come back with, with what you would like to propose potentially in this regard. Counsel is open to that at that point. Those discussions can continue in regards to costs or research, what, what that would entail. And counsel, anything else to add to that?
No. Thank you for your, your caring.
Alright.
That we care back.
Thank you. Alright. Moving forward, we have item number nine is a concept plan. Really quickly, counsel, do we need to take a five-minute break?
Yes, we do.
Alright. We will do a quick little recess for five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, I agree, but, no. Well, it's hard, it's hard, especially when legal tells you one way, you know? So. Anytime, we'll hit you to this meeting.
Is it a complete need?
This started forty-three years ago. And then, scope eight years ago, cortisone injections.
Do you find, not your bad, it's your problem. I hear you find the older you get, it just, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a.
Oh, yeah.
You just, you just, it takes longer, and I think that's gonna heal, and it doesn't.
All right, I'd like to invite everyone to take their seats again, thank you very much. And we will get ready to resume the meeting, are we still recording? Okay, thank you, I'd like to invite everyone to take their seats. Moving on, forward in the agenda, we now have item number nine, which is a concept plan. The Meadows at four hundred and four hundred, four hundred west, four hundred north. This will be presented by our planner, Mary Barnes, thank you, Mary.
Awesome, thank you so much, Maya. So, before I get into this, obviously, it's in your packet, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that this isn't a review and action, no action is gonna be taken at this time. This is simply a way for the council to give feedback to a site plan. It's, it's not a site plan approval, there's, like I said.
A concept.
Yeah, nothing's, nothing's happening, except for feedback. So, you're all familiar with this area, because it came before you, June sixth. Here, I'll scroll down to the site plan. Came before you, June sixth, and I explained a little bit, and it's still in the packet, about things like the road through the church, and this connection that's master planned, the general plan, the zone that still needs to be created, with any use that goes, with any higher density residential use that goes into this area. So, this is the updated, actually, let me start with the first plan that Phil Holland, sorry, our applicant, Phil Holland's back. We're excited, anyways, this is the first plan that he came up with, showed staff, and Mike sent this back to him after a review. It shows apartments and townhomes with the big detention basin. But we realized that that's not the kind of use that Lyndon is looking for in this area. And that's when Phil came up with this second plan that, oh, yeah, let me, let me go into how many exact units. So, there was forty-four apartments and twenty-six townhomes, for a total of seventy units, on, it's about six point one acres, six point two acres. And then, here's that second plan from June sixth, you've, you've seen this one before, and you gave some feedback on it, it has, I think it's thirty-two townhomes and eight detached small, single-family lots, detention basin, and that, still that road connection. The feedback given on this was not really looking for a townhome product in this area, and, you know, concerns with parking, and the, I remember the planning commission, when we went to them, they had concerns on the open space as well. And fast forward to now, where Phil has come up with this third plan. It has sixteen twin homes in the, in the yellow up here, and then, so fourteen small lot, single family, and then, plus this, yeah, plus this existing home. The old Gary Thornton home, that would make it fifteen small lot, single family, plus a detention basin. So that's what we're looking at tonight, but I just kinda wanted to show you where we've come from, how we've progressed. So, like I said, in this area, this is, this is such a preliminary look at this area. Like I said, there needs to be a whole zone created, and we haven't even really started talks on that. This is purely to get your input on what you, what you're thinking of this, of this plan. And staff has reviewed this previously, we had some comments about the roads, that Phil's fixed up already, but I wanna reiterate again, this isn't a final, this isn't a final site plan. There are still problems with it, we've listed a few of them in the staff report. And there will, there won't be a final site plan until we create the zone, and we go through the general plan amendments and, and everything, so, this is just preliminary. But, we'd love any, oh, let me see if it is, yeah, one more thing. So, the consideration of the infrastructure that's going to go into this site. You already know, we need a detention basin in this area, and this, I think it was like a sixty-six-foot right-of-way road, which is the four hundred north, four hundred west connection, plus a connection up to Gilman Lane, to fulfill UDOT requirements with Gilman Lane, and kind of shut, shut it off, so that, you know, traffic will go through the light at State Street. With all, and, yeah, so with all these infrastructure requirements that we're putting on the developer, it is, it is not an expectation, but we, we probably, we would be giving him some type of density to offset the cost of putting in the infrastructure, as I'm sure you would understand. But, yes, any questions, comments, feedback would be great.
A quick question on the detention basin area. I know we're also looking to do another culinary well, and we've looked at some other areas. Would it work in this place, or would it be in that spot that's further to the west better?
So, so we've worked with the Cook property, which is the field just to the west, and, and I've had some recent conversations with, with the Cooks, and, and having this detention that's part of the Thornton property, Cooks are willing and interested to explore an option where they would just shift their property to the east, and essentially do some trading of land, where they would farm that kind of tan color there. And then, there's some willingness to explore, where we would purchase maybe another one or one and a half acres, with the total goal of getting two and a half-ish acres on the west side of the Cook property, yeah, where Mary's identifying there. So, that seems to be coming together, that has been identified as a great spot for our stormwater detention, and it has been identified as a potential spot for our well. With that size of acreage, we could fit both of those needs on two and a half acres.
So, the well would not work in this current detention?
Oh, it may, yes. But that, that piece itself is not significant enough for detention.
One of the things that engineers indicated was because it's a very long, linear piece, the depth that would have to be made, to make it a usable detention, would be a very significant slope. And the location of just how the water works in the topography of the area with the slope downward, the ideal location would be on that more west end of the Cook property. And so, it looks like both parties are amenable to some, some sort of coordination with the city to help out with this significant infrastructure need that we have. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, great. Council, do you have any more questions for staff or Mary? Otherwise, I'll invite Mr. Holland to come forward and address me.
I have a question on the slide previous to this. The, there's a roadway here between the three units here that, that's one. What is the, what is the proposal for that, when we've got one to the west, and then there's, is that backloading, but then where's the front load for the back?
So, so this plan, I believe, Mr. Holland wants to avoid having anyone access their homes from four hundred north, four hundred west, because it would be, you know, really busy. And so, they would be frontloading off of that, that east road, yeah. It's like privately, uh-huh.
Yeah, no worries. Now, would clarify, not privately, it would be a public street, or would it?
For something of that size, it's unlikely that we would accept that as a public street.
Okay.
It does not, in past circumstances, things that have been narrower, such as the townhomes in Ivy, Anderson Farms area, those are all private lanes, so.
All right.
That would be the same for the twin homes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more thing about the streets, then, that, I think Mary made a comment about, about density, because of some of the, the street widths, or the number of street areas that would require improvements. There's nothing in our ordinance that requires that. As, as we've talked about it, as staff, we do recognize, for the size of this parcel, there's a lot of public infrastructure that would have to be installed. So you'd be looking at improvements of curbed better sidewalk along Gilman, along the connection from Gilman, along all of this four hundred north, four hundred west, and then all along the Lakeview frontage. And so collectively, just wanted to make sure that those types of issues, that's a significant amount of infrastructure.
Doesn't the city have enough? Don't we provide so much width for the road, for the public roads, is that right?
For the sixty-six-foot width, these major collectors, we have participated in the center of fifteen feet of asphalt. So, what they're installing for asphalt, surface improvements would then be the same as a normal residential.
Any other questions, council? All right, welcome back, Mr. Holland. Anything that you'd like to add to what's been presented thus far?
Yeah, so, I thought, Phil Holland, by the way, the Holland Group, I felt like our last conversation was very helpful. I, we had really good comment from the planning commission, and we had good comment from the city council. And we took a lot of those notes, we did a couple more iterations. So the three that you see here, kind of the evolving of this project, which all projects do this, we arrived at this one, which now we really feel like this is a win for the city, because of some of the things that have already been suggested, that this is the center point of multiple roadways, a potential detention basin that's regional, and it's between zones. Some of it's agricultural, some of it in the general plan is commercial, some of it is R-120. So it just is that piece that we discussed last time, that's just in the center of, it needs a vision. And hopefully, I'm just gonna spend one more minute on that vision aspect, but hopefully, today, you're seeing, this is what we'd like to pursue. And so I'm gonna hand you a product type that would be the, the end result of what these lots would be.
Is this something that was provided staff, that we could put up on the?
No, um, no, we just printed them out, but.
And so, when you have, and it was actually earlier this evening, you know, you, as a developer, it was good for me to be here, I'm in a lot of these city meetings, but when you sell a development later on, it, it impacts those down the road, and rightfully so. And we kind of try to do the planning upfront to where some of those items don't occur, and, and you can't avoid all of them. But, one of the things we did try to do is eliminate the access onto that sixty-six-foot arterial road. And so what you have in front of you is the front elevations of single-family homes that would not access off of that main fourth north road. So, behind, you have a small motorway or driveway that each one of these homes would access their rear-loaded garages, which is important for a couple of reasons. Number one, architecturally, I think that's more sustainable than how we've been doing it for sixty years in our state, where half of the house is a garage. And so, this adds more life to that front street. And so, we've done that on those green, single-family homes. Oh, there you go, look at that technology. Landscaping, it provides us a better ability to do a roadscape, landscape, in the front. So it's not just a stark thoroughfare driving down with vinyl fencing on each side of it. It adds life to it. What this doesn't present is, we would have fencing, but it probably would be more wrought iron out front, for some of the aforementioned reasons and other matters discussed today. But, we love this, I think that this is something that the driver by, over the course of decades, would say, "That's a great area." And in thirty years, these homes still look unique and viable, and the cars are in the rear, instead of out front. So, that's our vision for this area. We started out thinking, hey, it's right in there with commercial, it's walkable to other uses, this is a perfect apartment site. Working with staff, we found out, hey, regional detention basin, sixty-six-foot road. So we presented that initial plan with seventy units. And in my brain, I thought, "This is the perfect site." We were still less than ten units per acre with that original plan. And then we went down by half. And so my current plan is... And so my current plan is less than five units per acre, which a lot of your, your different uses that have been approved over the last year and a half or so. It was mentioned back in the June sixth meeting by a couple council members that you felt like you, Linden City kind of has townhome fatigue. I understand that completely. So we are not introducing townhomes here. We still, um, want to pursue this community and we feel like we're putting our best foot forward.
So Phil, can you just clarify, this is in the green or the yellow?
Or is it all of it?
Can you go back to the?
Yeah.
So that is the green and then there is...
Confirming that.
There is a, a similar, so they would just be together. So the dimensions are the same, but on the yellow, those units?
Twin homes.
Exactly.
Twin homes, not a, not a run-up.
Right.
What's, what's the range of square footage is on the single-family residence?
Uh, two thousand. So the building with the basement that you see in front of you is well in, like twenty-five to three thousand. I don't know if we're going to do basements here, so on average, two thousand.
And the private, because the private lane will have to be maintained by the residents, will you create an HOA within this neighborhood?
Yes. And so you can see some extra space. We have some landscaping to do as part of the, I'm sure the ordinance is going to require. But next to lot one, next to lot nineteen, next to lot twenty-four, twelve. I'm saying? Yeah. So, let me, so they front, these homes front this road. These three right here are large enough to where they, their garage is still back here and their front is still facing this way.
They face the backyard, basically.
Yep. And then this is similar. The fronts are right here. Alleyway, motorway is right here. And the reason we've done this is based on, yeah, you don't want cars to back onto this road. And so for a land use perspective, you have to do something with your land. In, in order to keep it low dense, which in my mind this is, for two, twenty-two, wasatch front. I think this is the best plan, residentially speaking. The, so back to your question, a lot of these areas will be, um, more of like an open space, a pocket park. There's not very many units here to have a big amenity. But, um, like I said, we still have areas to do that right here on lot one, on some of these entryways. This property actually comes down here further, but we just considered it, this is going to be part of that landscape. And then these are your traditional, single-family homes that you would see in Linden on a regular basis. Front loaded, um, some of the same ones I showed last time. So for a square footage perspective, those are probably more like thirty-five hundred to five thousand.
So, uh, clarification, so if you want to go back to this right here.
It's, it's at the top, that Linden City scanner tab.
Yep.
And these would be for home ownership? These would not become a rental?
So we would have these platted, single-family, or sorry, yeah, they'd have their individual plat. The market is quickly changing, so to answer that this early on is hard for me to do. But the projection is that, yeah, we will plat these individually for individual ownership. Hopefully I didn't skirt that question because it is a loaded question in my brain of it's hard to commit today. Because today, or now, we are in a housing recession, hands down. But yeah, so committing to something like that, it just, it's way early on for that. But single-family platted lots.
If you could please explain then the intense here. So this would be, this road, for example, would be an example of not the private lane, but the public, large, wide street.
Yes.
And you would have, you know, that landscaping strip as shown there, but there would, these would also have a wrought iron?
Right.
So, so the wrought iron would enclose the grass area, but there would still be a walkway to go to the front door? What do you envision there?
A gate?
What's that?
With a gate for safety?
It could be a gate for safety.
Did I say that out loud?
Only if the city attorney, yeah, if the city attorney is okay with that.
All right.
And, and keep in mind, I look at this, I, I'm glad to kind of answer some of these because I, I've done communities like this. But we are early on and this is a concept plan. And so some of these items, that's exactly what I'm here for. Kind of, yeah, we, we would like you to have some sort of gate. We would like this and that. So you're asking the right questions. And maybe I don't know a hundred percent what we're going to do yet, but that's all in that approval process.
All right. Council, any further questions for Mr. Holland? This is just a concept. He's testing the waters. He's refined his presentation to, uh, thus far. Any other feedback for him at this point?
I'd like to get some feedback. Phil, thanks for coming in, man. It's good to see you again. I told several people about your presentation last time. What does this land want to be? I, I really enjoyed that. I thought that was really well done. This area, the history of this area, it is the heart of Linden. It is old school Linden. It is half acre is a way of life. It is, uh, where I grew up and where I love. And so it's really hard for a lot of residents to hear that this is low density when in all reality, it's half acre and even quarter acres feels like density to this area. And I, I just want to help you understand the background, uh, of, of, of this. The residential portion, which I know it's split half and half between residential and commercial. The residential is R120, which twenty thousand square foot lots, uh, is the minimum, point four six of an acre. What we're seeing here is, is a fifth of that, forty-two hundred, forty-three hundred square foot lots in that green section, even smaller in the twin homes. With your largest lots being the nine thousand to eleven thousand, um, being half of what is currently allowed, currently been zoned, uh, and currently been brought forward by, by city councils, mayors for many, many years. I, I, I agree, we have townhome fatigue. I think we have a little bit of density fatigue. I appreciate your efforts. This is a concept review. No decisions are being made. And, and even in something as small as a concept review, you can see the, the neighborhood is here, concerned, worried. The, when it went up for sale, there was some, uh, conversation that it was going to be apartments. And I've had resident after resident reach out to me with concerns about the density of this area. I want to be very clear because I hate it when, uh, good people like you, good developers, smart developers, do a lot of work because the communication isn't clear from us. I want to be very clear in my communication in that I'm, I'm not comfortable with what was presented today. And it, it, and it's not close for me. It, it needs to come so much further. I understand that a detention pond is something that we as a city need and that's something you're giving up. And, and so that I recognize we need to give something for that. This is ju- just not even close for me of, of what, something we would give up for that. I, I just, I want to be very clear on where I'm at. You know, in my opinion, if it weren't for the detention pond, I could see this developed exactly how it's zoned and be very content. And I think the neighborhood would be very content to see some, uh, half acre lots. Like I spoke in June, there's some half acre lots that are this close to State Street in Linden, just up the street, that are incredible, that are multi-million dollar homes. In fact, one just sold for five hundred thousand, which is crazy. And again, in this economy, I know we're conscious of low income housing, but this area specifically, I, I think, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. This is an area that, that is, it feels very, very dense to them. Although I understand that from a developer standpoint, I agree, you're giving up a lot. But if I can just be crystal, crystal clear, this is too dense for this area and it's probably going to be, uh, hard to make it pencil where you need to be, if I'm being perfectly clear. And our job as city council is to not make it pencil for you. It is to give the citizens what they want, uh, and what they need. If it doesn't develop because of that, that is a risk where I'm willing to take. And that's unfortunate for landowners, for developers, for future home users. Uh, I understand that, but, uh, we have a tradition here. We have a, a culture and a motto here. And, and I think this, you know, there's times when we have departed from that and it's been in the right area, uh, one we discussed in detail today. I don't know that this, I, I just don't think this is the right area to depart from that strongly held culture, uh, of, of, of what it's always been, so.
All right, Jake, so what I'm hearing from you, you've been very clear, thank you. All right, so we, we've got Jake's opinion. You would, you would entertain less than half acre because of the development requirements and the, the give back to the city for these essential infrastructure items that might be needed. But it's somewhere, we're not close there yet, okay.
Could I probably throw in my comments here?
So Jake, let me just get one more question then. Have you thought through what number or what size would be something that's in the ballpark of comfort for you, is to help Mr. Holland if he's to pursue?
Yeah, and, and like I said, it's not close. I, I see those three, uh, and it almost seems silly to even throw it out. I mean, I see those three going quarter acre in an area we've never gone quarter acre. That's giving up something. I mean, even just giving up those three is like, hey, we're doing something. I don't know, you know, I don't have a set number, but, but, you know, even if you put those three and then two, two more on the other side, I, I still just, there's just no way it's anywhere near this. There's no way I'm willing to go below a third acre. You, you, you know what I mean? Even i- in this area, it's just not the right place to, to be skimping on, on the density side.
All right, thank you. All right.
See, and I'm going to say I'm pretty darned close to where Jake is here. We understand all of the infrastructure needs there and there's some trade-offs. For me, the first question becomes how we maybe negotiate with cooks, the neighboring property there, that maybe work some things out with the needs of the city. Those questions in my mind have to be answered first. But when we look at this picture, I really like the look, but it's way, 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 way too close together for me. So, yeah, it's, me and Jake are probably pretty darned close here.
If I could, Phil, so appreciate your time, efforts and energy in doing this. But I think, if you remember right, last time I said I'm, the lowest I would go was, was a R112. And on lot eleven, you still missed it by a few feet. So, um, I was looking for something a little bit larger than that. So in, in consideration for all the time that we've had, I'll echo pretty close to what, um, Jake and Van have just said. We're probably pretty close on that. So I'd be a pretty hard no on anything other than minimum of what we have above Ninth East in Linden. I mean, that works very well in that area of town, but I'm a pretty much a love half acre lots, but I'll do a, I'll go down as low as a R112. So that's, that's my lowest, so.
All right. Councilor Magalby, Van Cherry, which of you would like to go first? Okay.
I'm kind of in the middle. I've always been in the middle of this debate. I like this. I just think it's in the wrong place in Linden. But over time, I think we need to, as a council and as a city, we need to consider a little higher density scenarios, so that's my opinion. Mike?
Well, I don't think it's any secret how I, how I feel about, uh, I, I have a real struggle personally with property rights owners, with, with the property owner's rights to develop it in a way that benefits them. Uh, I have no issue whatsoever with a developer making money. That's what they're in the business for. While I agree we shouldn't go out of our way to, um, make sure you make a profit, I certainly don't feel like we should, um, just right out of the chute say, tough. You know, if you can't develop it this way, then you're not going to make any money. It's not going to be feasible for you, so hard cheese. I, I, I struggle with that, I really do. I could probably see going a little less dense, although five point five per acre, we've had this discussion ad nauseam. Uh, I think the economic realities of today don't lend themselves to half acre lots or even quarter acre lots. Maybe quarter acre lots, but, but half acre lots, I mean, who out there can afford, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for a half acre lot? Plus the cost of two hundred dollars a square foot for a single-family residence? So, so I, I struggle with that. We talk about being inclusive, we talking about being welcoming, and yet in, you know, one fell swoop, we eliminate an entire segment of, of, you know, potential members of our community. I, I'm with Darrell. I, I, I think much, I think resist as I might, I, I think the writing's on the wall. I think it's, it's pretty much, I, I know the way that the, the vote's going to go. I probably will, will, uh, vote. Say it again?
No, no votes tonight.
Oh, no, no, I know that. I know, but if, if it came down, if we had to decide, uh, I would, I, I may agree with, you know, maybe revising a little bit, making it not quite as crowded or whatever. But I, I don't, don't have any issues with it. There's enough protections, um, in the, in the zoning, in the code for, um, fencing, landscaping, uh, trees, you know, screening the areas. I, I like the idea of the lanes behind the houses so they're not dumping onto the, to the main road there. I think that was a well-thought-out concept. So, um, at, at this point, I, I don't know that anything I'm going to be able to do or say is going to, is going to make a difference, but I do have some philosophical concerns that I've shared with the council before and I've shared with the public before. I think that's all fine. Uh, again, I just get this distinct feeling that sometimes that with our, our friends and neighbors that come in, it's like we've got ours, but we don't want you to have yours. And, and that, that on some level offends me a little bit, honestly. I, I can't understand, you know, when we hear things like, it's going to affect our ward, it's going to affect our schools. Well, it, I, I know when our development was built, the same thing that happened when your development was built. It affected the schools, it affected the wards, it affected the traffic. I, I mean, I, I appreciate what's trying to happen here. I, I really do, but I've done enough studying. I don't think something like this is going to affect property values in any way, shape or form. If anything, it's going to improve property values. Well, you can laugh all you want, but you can do the studies, you can, you can...
I live in the backyard, I'd love to share some insight with you once.
I'm Mary Staid, and you are so wrong.
Well, that's another time for another discussion. We're okay about that, but that's my opinion and I give it as my opinion.
All right, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Darrell, thank you, council, for that feedback. So what I'm hearing is quarter acre lots would feel like a, a concession potentially on the table. Yes.
Really quick, I just wanted to provide a, a quick point of, uh, of information with some of the surrounding area there.
All right.
So just as an FYI, I want you to be well-informed on this. So we do have adjacent to this, there's three parcels here and three here and one, one on the north end that are all less than quarter acre. These three and one of these are nine thousand square foot lots. So just as an FYI, adjacent to this, we, we do have the three half acre lots on this side, but immediately adjoining it, there are no half acre lots. So just as an FYI.
All right.
Yeah, and, and just, just to, the hard part is I wish everybody was in the land planning process with me. What I should have done is brought my plan that shows what quarter acre lots look like here. A coup- earlier on this evening, we, um...
Earlier on this evening, we, somebody lived on Fourth North or Fourth East on a busy road. This is gonna be a substantially busy road. And if I came to you, which I don't even know how to do it. If I came to you, you would laugh at me saying, well, you can't back cars onto that busy 66-foot arterial road. And I would agree with you. And so then we would go on an exercise of, okay, what is the right land plan here? And then we would start from there. You can't plan, and the problem with this property is this road has to come through. And so now what? The answer is not, ah, we're okay with some quarter acre lots. A few years from now, and I've watched other cities do this, and I've been in the same meeting multiple times over the Wasatch Front. Cities start to change as they understand those general plan and what that really means to our state. And most people don't like change. And so I have to come up with, okay, well, here's what it should be, but let's try to do this. What I heard tonight is, no, we don't, we cannot develop this site. That's what I heard. And you might not have, you might not have thought that that's what you said, but that's exactly what you said because of these roadway alignments that your staff is requiring. Rightfully so. You've rendered this piece completely useless. You did that just in our discussion today. So that's all I have to say. We'll try to go back to square one, maybe talk to residents. But it's a sad day when a city just sticks to their standard. This has been a half acre area. We have a major, and I think you probably as a council hear this, we have a major lack of housing in our state because of meetings like today, where a city council says, no, because residents say, no. I'm in two of these meetings a week. Cities are starting to think more clear housing types. People don't wanna live on a half acre anymore. The majority of our population does not wanna live on a third acre lot on a 66-foot right of way. I heard Linden City say today, this is undevelopable, and we don't want it to do anything else other than what's kind of around it. And that's unfortunate. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Holland. Okay. All right, this was a concept review. Council, if you have any other further direction for Mr. Holland, communicate that with staff. All right. Well, this is not a public hearing. It was just a concept review. Okay, I would entertain just a couple, but it's just, so then we need to move on. Yeah, a couple. Go ahead and state your name.
Mayor, can I just mention that, again, on a concept review, where our applicant has left, and it is a public meeting, it's at your discretion. But I think we should limit what we're doing and what actions we take.
We'll just take a couple, that's it.
I understand he's left. Oh, Angie Newworth, sorry. But I really feel strongly about us being involved in the concept plans. You don't give the direction to the developer. I think what happened with Linden Nursery is he got his direction, and then he suddenly did what he wanted to do. And you didn't look at, I wrote letters, but nothing really happened where we made sure it was a viable development out on, with the barn and with the bowling alley. Or, well, not the bowling alley anymore. Anyway, but with this project, I really think you need to take in, I don't know, I wish there was neighborhood meetings in our city where they could give you guys some direction on how the neighbors really feel before you, before something happens where you create an ordinance and your spot zoning to accommodate a developer, a specific type of project. With our R2 overlay, I really feel strongly that we do create some good, on basement apartments, it creates some good low income housing that has a backyard for those kids to play with. I look at this plan, and I don't know where the kids are gonna be. I don't know where the visitor parking's gonna be. To me, this plan doesn't create what an R2 overlay creates, where you're in the neighborhood, you're spreading out the rental units and that kind of thing. And as far as the hardship for this project, I would hope you guys wouldn't try and figure out how to trade and what balance what's fair for the developer and what's not for the detention basin. Maybe the city needs to look at just going out and purchasing it instead of trying to figure out how to balance what it's worth. I've been, I've worked for a developer for 25 years. And we have developed pieces like this. We know we're gonna have to put curb gutter and sidewalk along Gilman Lane. We know we're gonna have to do all these things. We see it in the plan before we purchase it. So I don't know that there's too overwhelming the city's gonna pay for the extra cost of the larger road. So I'm not sure that that's really why you need to worry about those things.
All right, thank you. All right, one more, one more. Okay, just brief, thank you.
Hi, my name is Minta Valentine. Just really quick, I just, I live right on the backside there. And so I just really appreciate Jake and those who understand these kind of things. Right, we were here a few years ago when the reception center went in there. There was a lot of concerns that we came in with. And there was, you guys, your hands were tied in certain areas because it was already zoned. But we said, hey, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen. And we were told, no, no, it's, this is what it is. And I'm living right there saying it's happening. The reception center is parking in the church parking lot because there's not enough parking. There are people walking down, up and down that street that I've hit almost a number of times, and neighbors too, because there's not enough parking, and we knew that. There's a lot, and when I look at this, it's a nightmare waiting to happen. Something like this with children, with parking, it's not about not welcoming to Linden. We would love them in Linden, just not in this area. Like, it is already so busy with Los Hermanos and that, and then you put those, you've got children, you've got people, and they walk right down the street, and there's nothing there, and they're fine with it. It's just one of those things. And so as we're looking at that, kind of what, Andy, you know, just, those are one of those things that just to kind of think of when you're doing it. But really appreciate you guys, so thanks.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, we will move forward then to item number 10. This is a public hearing, ordinance amendment. So I would.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, motion by, okay, motion by Van, seconded by Randy. All in favor to open a public hearing?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous? All right. Okay, our community development director, Michael Florence, will present the review of this ordinance amendment.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council members. So this evening.
I would like to invite any of you that are choosing to exit and would like to visit to do so in the foyer. Thank you very much, so we can continue the meeting. If you could take, visit with your neighbors out in the foyer. Thank you so much. All right, go ahead, Michael.
All right, so Eniem Group is looking to purchase one of the new lots on 700 North. A few months ago, the planning commission approved a three lot subdivision on the west side of 700 North. That'd be the north side of 700 North. And so they're looking at developing the second lot in from the west. It'd be a five or six acre parcel. They're looking to move their corporate headquarters to Linden from Draper. And so they're petitioning for a couple amendments, and I'll go through those. So the first amendment is that they're proposing to increase the height, building height on the north side of 700 North. So currently, the Linden Village Zone allows a maximum height of 48 feet. They would like to build a five-story corporate office building. So this would not affect the south side. We don't have any proposals for the south side right now. And, you know, we, the north side in Pleasant Grove has some more industrial uses, like the mayor spoke about before in her comments. So they're proposing to increase that height from 48 feet to 80 feet on the north side. And then the second amendment would be, let me go to this map right here. So in the current zoning Linden Village Zone, the property's divided up into 23 districts. And each district's approximately five to six acres. And then each district has a sub-district, which is in letters A through U. And what the ordinance says is, if you have a full movement intersection, so that's what those green squares, the darker green squares represent. So if you are, if you're in that district, so for example, Eniem wants to go on District 6, because B, where B, C, L and M, that'll be a full movement intersection right there, they have to have a sales tax producing use. And so what they're proposing is that to remove from the map here, the letter B, originally, they had requested just to strike out the sales tax production requirement in the zoning ordinance. The planning commission's recommendation was just to move, remove letter B, and then for staff to come back and rewrite that section. Let me pull that language up real quick. As we went through it with city staff. Oh, I don't have it right here. I apologize. But basically, the, I can pull it up while we're talking. But the sales tax production section, what it says is that you are required to have that sales tax production corner. If not, you can receive basically an exception from the planning commission and city council that you can move it within a development or you can move it to a different district. The one issue we see with that is that it's pretty arbitrary. You know, you can tell someone, you can go, you can have, you can move your sales tax here, but you can't here. And so the planning commission felt like city staff, they recommended that we write some exceptions to that. As far as I'm concerned, I think there's still, even with trying to write some exceptions, we've tried to brainstorm a little bit, that's still difficult. Our recommendation from staff would, you know, you may wanna consider just getting rid of that section. It's not typical in a zoning ordinance where you say, you've gotta have sales tax. What you do is you write your uses in your zone, saying, we want these uses. And you don't write, oh, you've gotta have sales tax. So that may be something you want to consider as well. I can pull that up really quick. I'll pull it up here on the screen. So it's right here. So this 3D, so you've got A, B and C talk about requiring the sales tax. And then D says, upon recommendation from the planning commission, the city council may allow these identified areas to move within a district or between districts in a multi-district development or grant exceptions to this requirement altogether after finding that a project is of more benefit to the public than sales tax production. So you've got a lot of wiggle room in there. And it's, you know, the state legislature's tried to get us to narrow those down a lot more. So, but the recommendation from the planning commission was to just remove letter B in the ordinance there. It hasn't removed. And so those are the two proposals for you this evening. If you wanna discuss that sales tax production requirement further, we'd be glad to do that as well.
All right, thank you. All right. At this time, would you like to come forward, Mr. Eldridge and Kootley? And who is our third guest today?
We'll have each one of us introduce ourselves.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Kootley. I'm sure you guys have seen me a few times. I represent the sellers on this and the, well, I represent the seller on that.
I'm Daniel Ritchie. I'm the realtor representing the buyers on the land. Brandon here and Eniem Capital Group. There's a group of five owners.
Brandon Andre here with Eniem.
All right, thank you. Is there anything you would like to add to what's been presented so far?
Well, originally, we only asked for a waiver for this one particular use on all the other parcels that we are either under contract on or just about under contract on, which is five lots all the way from the western edge all the way to where Anderson Boulevard is coming across. We have offers out on two of those that we're just waiting for signatures. Of all of those lots, the only one that does not have any sales tax revenue would be lot number two, which is this group here. They're going to be, you guys are at about 80 employees, you know, expecting to be about 160 next year and doubling almost every year at this point. So it brings a lot of bodies to the site. It also, with the height that they're gonna have there, it'll be a very big attention getter when you're going down this road, which is something we need to make people stop and take notice of what we have in here. I think it's a great use for this piece. We've got a gym on the western edge, right next door to them. And then we've got another Class A office building, which actually has retail to the east of them at this point. And then, you know, it'll fill up more and more and more with that. We really don't know that we need the entire sales tax issue removed from the rest of it. We're not looking for that. We just really want it off this one lot at this point. And of course, if it's creating a legal issue, as your attorney says, then of course you guys can look at that later, so.
Could you please share with us the nature of your business to help us understand?
Yeah, it's a renewable energy company. We do solar and then technology as well. Software slash solar.
All right, is this like a sales organization?
It's a finance company that finances solar loans throughout the country. Yeah.
All right, very good. Tell us a little bit more, so let's have council maybe first discuss the height. Review that first and address their questions in that regard, if that's all right. So you envision this would be five story?
Yeah, we're looking to build a five-story building. And just west of where this lot is, there's those two really beautiful glass buildings that Pleasant Grove has. Valley Grove, you could actually pull it up right there on the.
St. John's Properties, right? How high are those?
First one's six. The one you see closest to six stories, the one in the back is five. I don't, Mark Weldon's building, which is on the other side of I-15, the Pleasant Grove Interchange, that one is 76 feet.
When we brought up to Mike, Michael, about the height requirement, so the Linden City Village commercial was 48 feet. And for us to build the size of building we want and to house the number of employees that allows for growth and for us to move our headquarters to Linden and be here for the long term, didn't think we'd be able to financially make it work to fit that size of building. So we explored our initial site plan. Application was for two buildings to try to meet the height requirement. And then you run into parking and footprint and then doubling the cost of everything. Just couldn't quite make it work. And so we came back and asked about height. And you were actually at the, Mayor, you were at the meeting last month for the subdivision plat.
The planning commission.
Who says, you know what, if we could build a taller building, we could increase the footprint a little bit, and it would allow for enough parking and for us to build a just beautiful Class A landmark building for Linden. And we're open to the design feedback. You know, we wanna work hand in hand with the planning commission and city council here to make it beautiful, to make it something that we're proud of. You guys are proud of, the whole city can be proud of. For everyone that gets off the freeway and comes right into Linden, it's like, wow, this is Linden. And we feel if we're the first one up on that corridor, as Mike here has talked about, it becomes a domino effect for all the other businesses and developers and people coming in and say, wow, there's movement going here. And we bring the bodies into the corridor. It helps all the restaurants and businesses and hotels and everything that intends to go there.
And Mr. Florence, could you remind council on our area plan, the Linden Village Zone? It stated this nexus point where there would be potential future BRT. It did speak to additional heights being a possibility there. It did speak to additional heights being a possibility there. Could you share a little bit?
Yeah, I, I mean, th- this was, this is kind of outside the village area we identify. This is more of just our flexible um commercial area. So, um, heights could vary in here. Um, and so, yeah, we, 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 we were a little more flexible in the, in these areas.
Remind me which lot you're looking at?
Lot number two. It's the second one in from there. What we're trying to do is avoid a State Street feel. You drive down State Street, you have single-story buildings from start to finish, almost all the way down. Does anybody ever notice any of those buildings while they're driving down State Street? No, you go from point A to point B to where you're going, and that's all you're really looking for. Get from one point to another, turn into Me Ranch, turn into the mall, whatever. Go to Texas Roadhouse, but you're not looking at anything in between because you don't notice anything in between. What people notice is height. I mean, they get down to where University Parkway is, and those buildings, they stand out. This will make people take notice. And it's one of the things that some of the other developers that I've talked to in the past, they all claim this as a pass-through area. The people just drive through there, they don't even notice where they're going. They forget they were even there. So we're trying to find something that's going to make them, you know, hey, you know, look at that. And, and of course, I think that will, like, like Dan mentioned, start the domino effect for the entire thing. We've got not super tall buildings on the other lots at this point, but I think it'll, you know, it'll change the dynamic for that.
So adjacent, we'd be looking at three-story?
Next door.
Next door. Um, the, the gym is two, and I think.
They have higher ceilings for their two stories.
Right, but it, it'll be a little bit taller building, but even though it's only two, and I don't know what the Enium, not the Enium, but the Everlight's guys are planning. But this could change what they're going to design as well.
Could we have staff answer Councilmember Hoyt's question regarding the lot here? Could you clarify?
Two, right at the top.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up the.
Known as six, right?
Or was it B?
So, yeah, it's on, in the zoning ordinance, it's District Six. But in the, in the subdivision, I'll pull that up, give you one.
North side of the street, second one from the left.
Yeah, it's about that second box in. Each one of those boxes is roughly five acres. The first lot is a five-acre parcel. The second lot in that, that these gentlemen will be on, it'll be four, and Lot Three will also be four. Lot Four will be a little bit over four, and Lot Five will be just under nine.
So here's the, their kind of plan. So this would be the gym here, twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, like was mentioned, they, they originally were planning two office buildings. They would now like to do one. Um, and then this would be the other corporate office at, at three levels.
So with the, the two being one, would it be the back one or would it be in front?
It wa- we think it'd look prettier and, and open to feedback, but to push it back. So not necessarily the back or the front, but just where it fits best on, on the parcel. And then also working with the city to make sure that the cross easement access works for the front and back of the property wherever we need to put it. We're, we're flexible for that.
For me, I know, I probably echo some of the other council members, is that bringing it too close to the frontage of the road is creating a canyon effect that we are not, I'm, I'm very opposed to. And to see this, that was going to be my question, is what were, was the concept of where you might put the, the building in? With, with eighty feet right next to, you know, because I know that currently it's a twenty-foot setback. Is that, was I reading, was I reading my, my staff report correctly?
Yeah, the, the, right, is, is minimum.
And I'd like.
The commercial design standards, well, the setback in the commercial general zone says twenty-foot setback. The commercial design standards also say that you can do a row of parking in between the, the setback and the building. And we're looking at that as well with our new commercial design standards.
So I'd say tuck it back. If you want to, if you want to hear from Councilmember Powell.
Would it, would this?
But I'm not telling you.
Would this language apply to additional feet of building setback for every one foot in height over thirty feet?
When it's adjacent to a residential use.
Okay, so.
This wouldn't on, yeah, this wouldn't apply on the north side.
This would provide some screening from, from the industrial, commercial
Thank you, yes.
On the Pleasant Grove to the, to the north, which I'm all for. And, and I, and I agree with Councilman Randy there that, you know, the further back, the better.
Just to create a human scale to it.
Yeah, exactly.
And, you know.
I think, and I think that'll be a balance, you know, when you get BRT, eventually you don't want it so far back that people don't have to walk through this whole island of parking to get there. And so, but we'll, we'll design that, work with the developers on that as it comes closer.
Right. I'll just say something on that.
Building don't need to look over the industrial.
Opinion with Enium so far on where the building sits.
I hope it doesn't.
All we've tried to look at is how many parking stalls relative to the building that we need for the footprint. So we're, we're pretty open there.
If I can add one more thing, please. When, when we originally came to ask for a variance on the height and just ask what's possible and, and that, that way we could go back to our architecture firm and have them give us some examples. Mike brought to my attention that Linden City General Commercial already is zoned for eighty feet. It was just the Linden City Village that was less.
It's the general commercial, a, a, a.
West side of I-15, only, not in any other commercial currently.
So we were, we are hoping for a seventy-two-foot building and, uh, the flexibility to build that, if, if that's what makes the most sense. And, and that's where he suggested we go the approach of an ordinance amendment, to have the ability to go up to eighty if we needed to.
Makes it easier for something else if it fits into the guidelines of the city wants as well.
Would you consider a parking structure so that the parking doesn't just take up a huge asphalt footprint?
Yeah, we, if, if that's what we need to do for code and zoning, to have the correct number of stalls.
And also meet the, the landscape requirements.
Yeah, and meet the landscape requirements. But what we are looking at with this is a parking structure might be needed if we do two buildings based off the footprint to have enough parking stalls. So then that would be three separate construction pieces, two buildings and a parking structure. So then we said, "What if we do one building with a smaller footprint? Can we get the correct number of parking stalls in based off square footage?" And we can to code right now. Are we open to it? Yes, but it, we would love to stay within the parameters right now and make that work.
So have enough open space to meet the requirements?
Yes.
Without jeopardize, I mean, having enough parking to meet the requirements.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, I mean, it's another saving three to four million on a parking structure. If we don't need it and we can stay within the code, let's try and do that, right?
It's expensive.
You know, you say, uh, just quick question. You say you're, right now, eighty employees, you said, or sixty?
Eighty.
Eighty. So you quickly go to a hundred and sixty and then, who knows, the sky's the limit.
It's hard to say, but we've been doubling the last three years.
And that's great. We, we're happy about that. Uh, is there going to be any kind of, uh, are you going to try to attract some other off, uh, non-related food places? Are you going to have an interior cafeteria for your, for your people or how, how are you going to?
We haven't spoke too much about that because what we've heard is there might be some other restaurants coming into the, the space.
But there'll be plenty of people to, to patronize those restaurants.
Absolutely.
Which is a good thing. And there, your retail component comes in, your sales tax component comes in.
We've done food trucks in the past where we have those. I, I don't know. So we haven't really spoke too much about that.
We see this as a way to put a little more bodies on, on the location.
On the loc- yeah.
We're going to get some with the use on Lot One, you know, because that's going to bring some, some, some traffic, whether that be breakfast, lunch, or dinner. Lot Number Five, they bumped up from what their original desire was five acres all the way to all the, what, they wanted to go to the hard corner on Anderson Boulevard. And I know they're already planning on doing at least one restaurant, maybe two. They're going to have more than enough room for two. But they may just develop the, the pad and sell that as a restaurant pad.
Cake is cheesecake factory.
Hey, I am working hard to do that.
We need to all start drinking.
My, I want one restaurant on Anderson Boulevard. I want there yesterday because the minute that goes in, all four corners are filled up. I guarantee you that when the minute one guy goes there, the other three corners will, will, will go fast.
All right.
It's a great location.
All right, very good. Let's move things along. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up if there's any public comment. We're discussing just the height requirement at this point. All right, back to council.
Um, just clarification for me. Um, this is just going to affect District Six. Or will it affect the whole, the height?
The height would affect the whole north side.
Okay, just wanting that clarification. Do we see that as any unintended consequences that we would like to avoid?
We tried, no, because we, we don't have a, on the north side in Pleasant Grove, we, we don't have any uses that would really be affected by that, additional height.
So, clarification, the discussion is height only on this or reducing the, the sales tax on?
I think the mayor split them up into two and we'll.
Make a motion together, but just trying to discuss the two points individually. So, so you, you mentioned that seventy-two feet was possibly adequate for your needs at this point. Okay.
Yes, our, our most recent communication from our architect firm, who is AE Urbia out of South Jordan, they build beautiful buildings. They design beautiful buildings and architect them. Our most recent communications is for us to get a five-story building, we would need seventy-two feet.
All right.
I, I know there is another user that Mr. Cutley is look, is approached, Mr. Cutley, that, that would need the eighty feet probably.
I spoke to Mayor Longberg about that earlier. We are signatures away right now.
Okay.
Have gone out to both parties. We're just waiting on the signature. All the terms have been agreed to.
Okay, are you able to share with council the type of use? That would be helpful for them to know.
It's, it's a regional sports training center. Uh, it will have the ability to house a football field size, you know, well, football field inside this building. Uh, they're going to need around eighty feet of height for that building for kickers and trainers. And it's not just for local high schools. It's, 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 it goes all the way up to pro, pro athletes that.
National, national draw.
It will have a very big draw and it is a regional type center. There's one in Provo, which is on BYU's campus. Um, it's an older building. It's probably, what, twenty-five, thirty years old? They, you know, the look of this building will be considerably different than that building. We've already met with Mike and discussed some of the things that the city might want on that. And that's one reason why I think Mike was pushing for the eighty feet, was just to get that handled in one, one meeting. That way we don't have to deal with that. That group is the one that went from five acres to six acres to just under nine, uh, when they found out, because they wanted the hard corner. And it's, they've already owned a local restaurant.
And they, they plan to bring retail?
They plan to bring retail.
Food, restaurant. Okay, very good. All right, council, height, do we have any?
For, for me, I'm comfortable with the height as long as, you know, to Randy's point, we're not close to the road. And so if we need to have some verbiage that pushes it back to a certain distance so that we're, it just doesn't feel like you're being crowded there.
The other group is moving their building, the large building, to the back of the property. It's going to be as, as far back as they can legally do it with the setbacks. And of course, their retail element will be in the front, which is what I wanted because I didn't want to block the view of any of the other buildings on this with this larger building. So.
Has staff reviewed, um, something in the language similar to the current setback language that I just brought, brought up that could be applied or appropriated in this, or does that put us in a box that's too hard to decide at this point?
With the transitions?
Uh-huh, the transitions for height.
We didn't consider this since it's industrial and heavy industrial on the PG side.
But just mentioning what the council's saying here is, you know, allowing eighty feet, they want to have some ability to require some setback.
Because plans change. Somebody decides they don't want it, somebody else comes in and says, and now we want to be out closer.
So that's what we're working on with our commercial design standards. Our, our commercial design standards currently show what you see right here with, um, the sidewalk, a little bit of landscaping, uh, one row of parking, a drive aisle, and then the building. So your setback, you know, from the road, I don't know, fifty feet, something like that, fifty, sixty feet. Um, we'll, we'll, we're looking at some, creating some flexibility in that with our updated design standards.
And in reviewing UDOT's potential plans to take more footage. Okay. All right, so it sounds like staff is comfortable with making an action on the height and that setback study and review there's ability within our gen- because that is currently under review with the general, uh, commercial design standards that we're somewhat grandfathered at this point to take that into consideration before.
Yeah, I mean, we're just working, I don't, yeah, we'll, we'll have some flexibility in that.
Okay. And timeline, when maybe those details will be presented?
I don't have a timeline right now, but, and it'll, it'll be probably around the same time as they're bringing their building forward, so.
All right. Very good. All right, council, any, any other concerns or questions in regards to height? Okay, then let's address the second proposal here in the ordinance amendment, the sales tax production requirements. Any questions, council? All right, any public comment on that amendment? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
All right, thank you. Okay, motion by Councilmember Powell to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Magalby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, back to council then. Let's discuss this matter then in regards to the retail sales tax requirement.
So the only, the option I have in the ordinance for you tonight is the increased height and then just to take it off of.
This district.
That district.
Specific district.
With the caveat that, that council has suggested there will be some further review of this overall.
The recommendation of the planning commission, if you want us to do the same thing.
Okay.
Make a motion unless there's more discussion.
Go ahead.
All right.
Is that all right, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve the ordinance amendment of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two dash eleven dash O as presented, but with the clarifications of how we're going to handle the tax distribution. Is that what you're wanting?
Staff will bring back some recommendations.
And that we will also, how do you want me to say this, Van? With the, with the, with the setback.
Comfortable with what Mike's talking about with those design structures that have to be in there.
Okay. There you go. I'll leave it there. Is that okay, Kathy?
Motioned again by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Magalby. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We look forward to seeing you again with your plans. Yes.
We are so excited to build and this Enium crew, it just, they just give me chills. They're so good to work with. So good to work with, amazing employee group. They're going to be wonderful to have in the city and to be part of the city and the restaurants. It'll, it'll bleed into housing and the people that they, they bring and grow. It'll be an incredible thing for the city and they're great to work with.
We're excited to have you, you choose us to be your headquarters and make something beautiful that we can all point to as we're so proud to have here. So thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate Mike.
Makes a lot of work.
I've, I've sent him to a lot of development review meetings and visited with Mike on a few things. And I know at times he hasn't been necessarily, uh, excited about some of the things we've asked him to do or required him to do, but he's, he's been a great, great supporter, great sport, and he's done everything he can to make it work and be a win-win situation. So on behalf of the council, with me personally, thank you so much for your, for your efforts.
You're amazing, Mike.
Good, great.
Great work.
Worked hard to bring good partnerships forward. We really appreciate it.
We're working on it.
It's happening. That's the exciting thing. It is happening.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, here we go. We're going to move forward now, moving along item number eleven. This is also a public hearing for an ordinance amendment.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Vancheri. All in favor to open a public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Didn't hear you, Jake?
Yes, aye.
Okay. All right, we are now in a public hearing. Okay, back to Mary Barnes.
Thank you. So, um, this is a fairly simple ordinance amendment, so I'll just go through it quickly. Um, the planning commission did recommend approval of the last planning commission meeting, which was August ninth. Um, this amendment is basically doing two things. One, it's consolidating the subdivision code and the Linden City Development Manual. It, there's, you know, there's a difference there where in the Linden City Development Manual, it requires ten feet of a public utility easement in the front yards. And then in the, in the subdivision code, it requires seven point five feet in the front yards of subdivisions of public utility easement. So that it's, it's going to consolidate our documents, kind of make it more streamlined across and hopefully help developers, you know, eliminate some of the confusion there.
It would be ten feet on both. That's, that's what we're going for.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the second one I'm talking about. So this first one is just, um, amending the subdivision code to put in that. So, this first one is just amending the subdivision code to put in that front yard public utility easement. But the second, the second thing that this ordinance amendment is doing is what Mike is saying, where it is reducing the requirement that we currently have in our subdivision code for fifteen feet across a property line. So, that means seven point five feet on each property line for a public utility easement, reducing that to ten feet across a property line. So, that would be five feet each, right? And there's a few reasons why. First, it- Yeah, sorry, side yards. Anyways, so, there's a few reasons why. First, it makes a lot of sense. So, I've talked to the engineers extensively about this. They agree with it. They're saying that many, many other cities are doing this, reducing the PUE to five feet. But, oh, yeah, and another thing is residential owners, homeowners, when they want to build like a garage or an accessory structure in their backyard, they're permitted to build five feet away from their property line. But when they have a seven point five foot PUE, then they have to go chase down every single utility company, there's six, and get a utility release from them. And my experience, I've been here a year, so it's not that long, but it takes about a month to get everyone in, and that's usually due to CenturyLink, to be honest. But anyways, having this would just reduce some barriers for homeowners as they develop their property, you know, put in the things that they want to do. And something that was brought up in the planning commission that was a little bit confusing to them is that this, this ordinance amendment is not going to affect all the existing subdivisions in the city. People would have to come back for plat amendments to get it to affect those. This is just going to affect all the subdivisions moving forward, help people in the few remaining parcels of land we have left to be able to do the greatest and best use for them within their own parcels of land. It doesn't really affect commercial properties, because there's not usually a side or rear public utility easement or a setback. So, anyways, like I said, two things that this is doing, but any, any questions on that?
I like it. Very common sense approach. Public? Cleans up some costkeeping issues.
All right, very good. It does not affect our, you know, setbacks, this is something for all the underground? Or, is this a punch, are there ever above-ground utilities that we're dealing with in this? Nope, just underground. Okay. Yeah, we're ready.
I make a motion to remove out of the public hearing?
Yeah, second. Motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Vanchery, seconded by Councilmember Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, any further discussion or question for staff? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance amendment twenty-twenty-two-nine-dash-o as presented.
Second.
Okay.
Get down.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I hear none opposed, so we are through. I think that was our quickest item on the agenda tonight.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you. All right, so here we go to item number twelve. This is also a public hearing to have an ordinance amendment regarding the city general plan housing element, and we'll have an update from our development director.
I should go open a public hearing. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Daryl, seconded by, was that?
Van.
Van. All right, thank you very much. All in favor to open a public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've talked quite a bit about our moderate, moderate income housing plan over the last few months with our general plan committee. And, and then I made a presentation on our strategies to the council at your last meeting. So, I've updated the plan extensively with updated charts and graphs, updated information on population figures and housing. I'm going to just hit a few of these briefly, and then we can go into some more discussion. You know, this really sums it up. This January report from the KMC Gardner Institute about population growth, it says, "Projected growth in Utah results in population increasing from three point two million in 2020 to five point four million in 2060." "The anticipating timing to reach four million residences between 2032 and 2033, five million between 2015 and 2051." "Salt Lake County will remain the largest county. However, Utah County will experience the most population growth over this time period." And so, let's see, let me, so you can see, you know, our, I thought, I always think this is amazing, this chart here. You know, I, for you that have lived here a long time, that nineteen ninety to two thousand, it must have just been crazy in Linden with all the housing and population growth. You know, we, we increased dramatically from, you know, four thousand residents, doubled to eight thousand residents in that ten-year period. And so, a couple of things that are on our population growth, from the census, our, our under-five age group is down quite a bit. You know, we've seen a big decrease in that. Three years ago, or twenty-seventeen data, five years ago, showed a twenty-eight percent drop. And now, we're seeing a thirty-seven percent drop between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. The highest, one of the, some of the higher increases are that population age from twenty to twenty-four, and then older population, you know, that sixty-five to seventy-four age group is, so we're, we're getting older as a population in Linden. You'll see that in some other charts as well. You can see how it, how we look compared to Utah County, the state of Utah, and the United States. This ten to fourteen, you know, we're pretty high. And then, we're high again, that forty-five to fifty-four age group. And so, that basically fifteen to age group to forty-four, we're not as high as the, as the county and the state. We're, you know, we're a little bit lower in those areas. This is pretty typical of every city. They're seeing a average household size decrease. So, we're, our average size now is three point seven-six. In twenty-ten, we were at three point nine-seven. And that's consistent among every community. Our population, the Census Bureau has us at eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-four. I calculate that we're about twelve thousand five hundred using building permit data and that average household size. And so, we're a little bit higher in that.
When you speak data, what's currently entitled, or what is currently existing right now?
Entitled.
Entitled.
Yep, so what we've released building permits on. So, it's a little, it's a little bit ahead, you know, it's probably six months ahead of, you know, by the time a home gets built. A couple of other things, median income. If you look at where we're at, Linden in twenty, in two thousand had a median income of sixty-two thousand. Twenty-seventeen, we were at eighty-one thousand. Twenty-twenty, we're at ninety-four thousand. The, we're fifth in the county behind Highland, Alpine, Cedar Hills, Lehigh. So, just, we, we kind of went over this last time. If you take an average family size of four in the county, the average households of four in the county makes about ninety-one thousand. That eighty percent, that's the target income that the state wants us to look at. Provide housing strategies for is that seventy-three thousand range. Let's see, here's, you guys are all aware of this, but, you know, you can see how, over the last home prices in Utah, you know, in two thousand, we're a hundred and fifty thousand, and, you know, on average, they're at four sixty right now. So, if you look at the, that eighty percent AMI for the county, you know, that a family of four makes an average of seventy-three thousand. If you don't, the HUD recommends you don't use more than thirty percent of your annual income on housing. That would be twenty-two thousand. That would be a rent or mortgage payment each month of about eighteen hundred, including utilities and mortgage insurance, house, home insurance, those types of things. So, that's that target we're looking for, is that eighteen hundred a month mortgage or rent rate. You can see here that the number of housing units built over the last few years, the orange is the townhomes when they came on board at Ivory Homes. The last couple of years have been pretty much accessory apartments and single-family. We're doing well on single fam, I mean, on accessory. We've got two hundred and forty-three legal ones that we are aware of. We have about seven hundred entitled lots that some have started, like Plat E and Plat G at Ivory Homes. Plat E is almost finished, but it's not all the way completed, so I still left it on here. So, you can see the different projects here that have been entitled. So, we have about seven hundred units. Number of affordable voucher units, so these are like the units, the three units for disabled individuals by Hollow Park or, and county, or not county, but the Housing Authority vouchers that are being given out for rentals in Linden. We have about twenty-four of those. I thought, so the, the state requires that we go through an analysis, determine what's the current housing prices in Linden. So, they recommend that you take, you look at some different websites. So, if you look at Zillow, I looked at zillorailtor.com and utahrealestate.com. Currently, we've got eleven, eighteen, and twelve homes for sale in Linden. If I, if I take the average price of those homes respectively, the average home right now in Linden is nine, between nine hundred and ninety-one thousand and nine hundred and twelve thousand for those eleven to eighteen homes. I also looked at what's for rent in Linden, and KSL had seven apartments, apartments.com had one, and Zillow had three. So, the average rent between, for those was between eight fifty and forty-three hundred a month. Now, that did not, for both of these stats, I did not count the Ivory Homes development, because they have their own real estate team, they're not posting on KSL for rent, they're not selling their homes on KSL. So, those numbers don't count as that, and I noted that in this, in this report. So, just a couple of other things I just thought was interesting, comparing these two charts, and then I'll go into the strategies. So, this takes people that have a mortgage in Linden, so if you have a mortgage, this was in twenty-seventeen, if you had a mortgage, let's say, for example, of less than twenty thousand, a hundred and forty-three out of a hundred and ninety-five were spending more than thirty percent on their income. If you look at that in twenty-twenty, you had less mortgages at twenty thousand, for example, but all eight of those individuals were spending more than thirty percent on their housing. You can see that, those similar graphs there. So, you know, I go through this report, I say, I give a history of what we've done to help support moderate income housing, how we really support accessory apartments, how we have lots of, how we've supported the R2 overlay. That, that's kind of built out now. We may want to look at addressing that in the future again. So, let's go to strategies real quick. So, we picked, state law requires us to pick three strategies. I picked five for this. They, you get a higher priority in transportation funds if you pick five instead of three. So, the, and you have to come up with an implementation plan. So, that really, the why, the whole reason why we had to update this plan was to pick the new strategies, languages that the legislature came up with, and then put an implementation plan in place. So, strategy one was kind of a give-me, because the state already mandated that we allow accessory apartments. And so, that, that's what we put here as our first strategy. Create or allow for reduced regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units. What we're saying that we'll do is use that two forty-three as our baseline, try to work in the next year on finding, surveying and working on finding more accessory apartments. Look if we want to do some type of amnesty or hold harmless, so we can figure out exactly how many we have in the community. And promote our ADU ordinance through the website, through Facebook, social media, city newsletter, letters. Strategy two would eliminate impact fees for any accessory dwelling unit that is not an internal accessory dwelling unit. And so, this would be removing that impact fee of about eighteen hundred dollars for detached or detached with a breezeway. And so, in the past five years, I think we've approved three detached accessory apartments. This would be promoting that program. That would be part of our implementation plan, is to remove, remove the impact fee and promote the program within the city. Third strategy was demonstrate utilization of a moderate income housing set aside from the, from a RDA area. So, as we talked last time, you have to set aside five percent in your Linden Village Zone. You have to set aside ten percent in the Linden Parkway District, where we created for the Kia. So, that would be using those funds to help offset costs for moderate income housing. So, that may be helping with some utilities, that may be helping with, you know, other, other infrastructure requirements to help offset those costs. Fourth one would be reduce, waive, or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. And so, if we, with a developer, we have a developer come in, we may work with them on some, on removing some impact fees for those specific units. And then, five would implement zoning incentives for moderate income units and new developments. So, the implementation plan for this would be over the next two years to study, should, is there some parking reduction we could give for those moderate income units? Is there a density incentive? Last time, we, we threw out some numbers. We don't have to have that set today, but, but we need to look at some different incentives. It may not be a density incentive, it may be just parking. Or, you know, we'll, we'll look at different options and bring you some recommendations. So, these were the five recommendations that came from staff and the planning commission. Wanted to take any comments, and I know I went through this quickly, and it's been a long night, and so, I do have to have this adopted and a report turned in to the state before October, or by October first. So, we, we had, we would have one more meeting with the council if you wanted more time on this, but.
Thank you, Mike. You've worked tirelessly on this, and this is a very thorough report, so thank you.
I'm paying Zion's bank next time to do this, so, or somebody. This was stressful, so.
Yes.
That was a great consolidation.
To help us with the transportation class.
And it's been a great consolidation of all the discussions that we've been having on this. I appreciate your efforts on this, Mike.
All right, these look like very solid presentation things for our reports that I think will put us in, in good shape to show that we're moving forward in good faith. And I think these are all recommendations that, you know, we've been able to discuss and we're comfortable with and match kind of how Linden wants to approach some of the moderate income ways to strategize moving forward. So, thank you for mirroring that so well in the language here.
You do, Mary.
Yes, and Mary as well. So, any comments or suggestions or questions thus far in what was presented?
Nada. Make a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Magalby, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to council. All right, so this is an ordinance amendment. Any further discussion or questions for staff before we move forward? If not, I'd entertain a motion if we're ready.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-two-dash-ten-dash-o, amending the moderate income housing element of Linden City General Plan as required by state code, as presented.
All right, motion by Councilmember Magalby. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded, sorry. Okay, seconded by Council-
It's spreading the love around, aren't we?
By Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that sounds unanimous. Thank you. Very much. All right, the last item.
One more public hearing. I'll make a motion to open it.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing for item number thirteen, and we will be reviewing overtime compensation policies with our city administrator, Mr. Cowie.
Thank you, mayor. We faced some additional turnover in public works, and we're struggling to find people to fill some of those positions. This has been an issue that we've discussed in the past. You may recall, last fall, we had, we've heard some feedback from a few of the employees that have left that, that overtime compensation is a concern. Currently, what's in place that we adopted last fall, we implemented a system where individuals could get up to three thousand dollars and paid overtime. In our rules, prior to that, it was time and a half of comp time, which is basically vacation. So, they would get a- So, they would get a, uh, an overtime call-out on a Saturday night and their compensation was accrued vacation time. So, we heard some concerns with that over, over several years. Last fall, adopted that allowance to go up to $3,000 of paid overtime. Uh, we had two individuals hit that cap by the end of the fiscal year. Several individuals that chose to continue to take that vacation time. But with the individuals that have left or are leaving, um, we've heard some of those, those concerns being that they aren't making cash paid overtime on call-outs. And so, cemetery call-out has been the same way on a Saturday. Usually, they're midday. Um, it's two, two and a half hours of, of commitment. Um, same thing, they were being compensated with that comp time. Um, what we're recommending is to change to, uh, our policies which would allow, it would basically strike that $3,000 limit, that experience on the paid overtime, um, and allow the employee to continue to elect to be paid or receive the comp time in these specific divisions, uh, in Parks and Recreation, Building Inspections, and Public Works. Um, so, other sections of the city like administration or things, that would still be the comp time. And it's, it's rare that we have a lot of overtime accumulated in some of those. So, then for call-out, if, um, if individuals are called out, uh, again, we would be adding in the clarification that they could receive monetary compensation for this. Um, we, we did add in also just this recommendation on the cemetery. Uh, the way our current policies are phrased is if something's scheduled, so like Linden Days where employees have plenty of advance notice and they know that they're gonna have to be here on a, a weeknight or a Saturday, those are not considered call-out, overtime-eligible types of activities until they hit their 40 hours. And so, once they're at 40, yeah, they get the time and a half. But, um, for cemetery call-out specifically, this would add it as an eligible overtime performing activity. So, um, as, as far as the budget hit on this, I want to share really quick, um, our evaluation on this.
While you're pulling that up, does this allow them to choose a little bit of both?
It does. So, they can opt at every pay period, every two weeks. They can opt with permission of their supervisor, which to choose. And so...
Well, I mean, they could say, they had 10 extra hours. I want five of it in money and five of it in vacation.
Yeah, it allows them to do that. So, um, this isn't something I wanted to throw in the staff report, but, uh, just as an FYI, that might be hard to see here. Let me increase these. Um, we looked at the last two fiscal years and evaluated for all of the comp time that was received, if they would have been paid, how much that would have been collectively. Um, assuming in our budget, then, we have budgeted, worst-case scenario, every employee hit that $3,000 limit. So, for instance, for Public Works, in our last fiscal year, we budgeted $39,000 for the paid overtime up to that $3,000 limit per qualified individual. Had we paid him everything anyways, it was 40,755. So, a pretty close number, um, if we would have paid everything. But, the overtime paid, if you look at some of these blanks right there, those are individuals that chose not to take it and put it as comp time. And so, I don't think we're gonna hit any budgetary concerns. We're gonna watch this really carefully. We had similar results in a, in the prior fiscal year where we had budgeted 36 and we were right close to that at 38. This isn't a financially concerning issue for me.
One of the things Juan brought up too was, it was only 3,000 per employee allocated, but he had a budget amount to work with of, you know, 39,000 and he couldn't transfer that across to individuals who would take up.
Yeah.
And so, if we look at it as, we're gonna get more productivity as well because, you know, giving comp time is a loss on productivity as well.
Could, could be perceived as that. And so, the, the other aspect is, is as comp time, vacation time builds up, if somebody does leave the city, we're still obligated to pay that. And if they, if they save that up over multiple years, we're potentially paying them for that time worked at a higher rate. And so, overtime cash is actually, I think, a long-term better value, if that makes sense, so.
How long can they stockpile this for?
It's, it's capped at a certain number of hours. And so, an employee can receive up to 240 hours by federal law of overtime before we are obligated to pay that. So, they can accrue up to 240 comp time hours.
Alright, any questions? This is a public hearing. Any comment from the public here? You have... Linking your hair to the bitter end, as always.
Alright, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Van, seconded by Randy to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's circle this home. I want to hear it adjourned pretty soon.
I would like to, uh, move. Hold on, let me get there. I'd like to move...
Come on, we're in overtime.
Yeah, no kidding. Sorry about that. Uh, I'd like to move that we approve the, uh, consider the updates to the overtime compensation policies found within the Linden City Policies and Procedures Manual.
Second.
By Councilmember Vanchery, seconded by Councilmember Magalby. All in favor for this policy change?
Aye.
Aye. Second.
Quick draw. Hey, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay.
We all, we all did.